The town council work session for Tuesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three at three P M. And we begin with capacity analysis study. That is very interesting.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Yeah, with me today, I've got Jake with RRC Associates out of Boulder. And the town engaged RRC associates to go through the capacity study. Really to address a concern that council had if we were really seeing in the last five years or so, an increase in people in town. Or if it was perhaps just a perception of more people in town. And so we looked at Jake looked at the last five years. And if we did see an increase, the next question was, who are those folks that are coming into town? What does that increases at visitors' residence, et cetera? And so they looked at different indicators, which we were before you back in your council retreat in September of two thousand and twenty two. And so that's been refined since then. Obviously, the main indicators were the mobile location data, which is cell phone data, traffic counts, trail user counts, sales tax collection, lodging room nights, and average daily rates and school enrollment numbers. So some of that data that they also reviewed that's in the actual study in your packet was like also parking and free ride data, for example, and housing data. But due to the just consistency of data collection or the reliability of it, for example, we didn't use transit because there was some routes during COVID that were cut. Parking counts were kind of collected intermittently. So those weren't deemed reliable at this point. I know staff is working on kind of getting that to be reliable data going forward. And so there's a placeholder that you'll see in the dashboard that Jake will present with that. Ultimately, what we found was that the there is an increase in visitation and it's visitors, not residents. When we look at two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty two, there was a banner year in two thousand and twenty one of visitation. So that was shown through the Tiger Run, sorry, Tiger Road, traffic counter, the mobile location data, which also measures our local residents. So we could know that it wasn't the locals that were increasing in visitor in the numbers in town. Sales tax related to short term rentals went through the roof kind of and in turn, so did our sales tax numbers. Trail usage, we definitely saw a big increase in that as well. So two thousand and twenty one was our banner year, it looks like. And whether or not that was due to pent up COVID demand for travel is a question because we since two thousand and twenty, since that two thousand and twenty one year in two thousand and twenty two, we've seen it decrease. So Jake's going to go over that in a lot more detail, but we have questions. We are here to answer those too.
Thanks, Julia. And thanks for all of you for having me here. It's always nice to come up to the mountains in the winter. It's gorgeous drive. So just to walk you through a bit of our process of how we put this together. As Julia described, our goal, we had kind of our goal with this project was twofold. One of them was to develop a dashboard of indicators where we can monitor things over time, see if things have changed. It can be updated. But first, we need to determine kind of what indicator should go on there and also try to address the question of has visitation or capacity increased over time? And the main thing, as Julia mentioned, we did come to kind of a these, these six indicators that we see as the most useful to measure, and I'll go through why we we pick those. Obviously, with, you know, over time, Breckenridge has had a number of residence sentiment studies that we've done, measuring tourism perceptions of tourism of residents. So this topic really started and from what we could see in two thousand and seventeen to become a hot issue and COVID obviously exacerbated a lot of those concerns as well. So what we did first is to really determine this question of as as capacity has increased, who is it as a visitors, as a locals, we want to take as many data sets as we could, try to put them together and correlate what we're seeing. Not every data set's perfect. Not every data set tells us exactly what we need, but it's about kind of taking them all together and trying to triangulate what are some of our conclusions are. What we first did was take as many town data sets as we possibly could. So the primary data sets that we reviewed were everything from traffic counts on Highway nine, trail user count, sales tax collections, school enrollment numbers, lodging data, census data, parking counts. There was just, we tried to take as much as we could that measured not only resident resident volume and and a number of people live here, but also what we could glean in terms of tourism data. The one data set that is not publicly available that we used is we have our own mobile location data product that we use to measure capacity. We use it in the National Park Service quite a bit. And we've been using it at destinations kind of across the country to understand visitation over time, especially over COVID.
What is it again?
It's mobile location data.
Global?
Mobile.
A mobile.
Yeah. So basically, yeah, cellphone data. Basically, if you're it, it sounds a little big brother, but if you're using any kind of app that uses your your location, you're getting a anonymous timestamp and lat long collected by companies that's available for use. So we use that to try to understand over time how those samples of devices have changed in Breckenridge. Some of the things that we want, when we're going through this data, a big focus was trying to determine how do we, what kind of data do we want to monitor going forward? And what helps us answer this question at hand of has capacity changed over time? The kind of five main topics we really are kind of standards that we set with that data was one, it had to have some ease of access where we could get it reliably, we could get it easily. If we're going to update this seasonally, it's got to be something is not a pain for people to pull together. It's got to have consistency in the long term collection methods. Anytime you're going to compare change over time, you want to make sure your methods are as close to the same as possible because small changes can impact your conclusions. We wanted to make sure it had relevancy to explaining current capacity of visitors and locals. Long term data reliability to make sure it looked consistent over time. And then just relevance to kind of the the questions that we have over the questions that may arise and trying to take all those ideas and say, these indicators are what we would recommend monitoring, you know, on a long term or on a long term plan. As we, yeah.
Can you add sewer data from Brexan district?
Yeah, I'm sure.
That is probably more reliable than anything. You know, the sales tax data is skewed by price increases.
Sure.
As well as average daily rate. So, you know, I think to really drill down, I think that is the that's sort of the gold standard of data that doesn't change that the fluctuation is because there are more people in town. So, yeah. And I know Andy has offered. Andy's offered that data to us multiple times. So.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I think we'd be happy to take a look at it.
And that data will give us a very reliable total number, and then the rest of it will help us extrapolate.
Sure.
Who are they? Where they come from?
Sure. Yeah, that works.
Would you include water data in that or sewer would be?
No, I think sewer, just because there's no fluctuation with like the summer with landscaping with water or anything like that. I think sewer data is just a finite set. It's just people coming that are in town. They have some, they have some inflow through some of their pipes, but I think they have a pretty good handle on when that happens. So it's really, I think it's as far as everything we're looking at. I think it's pretty, pretty good.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to to take a look at and see if we can incorporate it.
From a, from a housing perspective, I'm curious about employee counts. Is it easy enough from bolt licenses or whatever? Do we have, do we have the access to get employee numbers just to kind of?
Licenses aren't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're accurate.
Accurate. Yeah. Is there any way to accurately get employee numbers? I guess maybe is the better question.
So they do have employment data at the state collects some kind of employment data. It's it's spotty in mountain towns, to be honest, because there's so many people that move in and out of employment that it's tough to get a good read on it. We, I think what we were seeing over time was that, you know, part of the trap, part of the trick of this project was understanding how do we get at the resident base? Because, like I said, census even has a hard time collecting data out of mountain towns and having to be accurate because it's just a different ballgame compared to other communities. So what we tried to do was use a mix of our cellphone data, which collects, we had a polygon drawn around the entire town of Breckenridge. We know with that cellphone data where the device's home location is based on this day is collected all year round. If you see a device sticking in one neighborhood for eight plus hours every night for three months or more in a year, you can assume it's their home neighborhood. And that's kind of what we had to use as a proxy for resident.
Yeah, and I like that. And that's valuable and good stuff. Like I saw that in there. I think my question's coming more from like, as we work on housing, what's the right number? You know, if we know how many employees we have, that I think gives us a little bit of a measure, but if there's no good way to track.
Well, one of the problems with that is a lot of employees work in multiple places. So you can't even look at, you know, just look at two restaurants. You double count, you end up double counting a bunch of people because a bunch of people work multiple jobs. So.
Tricky. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I'll, we are about to under start our employee generation nexus study also. We just got that signed. So we'll be starting that and that might get to some of more of the actual detail of employees.
Yeah, I'm just curious there.
Yeah.
That might be the way to do it. Once we get the results of that study, just overlay it over all the existing businesses and be a consistent number anyway.
Even if there was a fudge factor in there that we knew about, you know.
It's a good idea, Julie.
So some of the data sets we didn't end up using kind of were because it had some issues in terms of us doing kind of long term comparison. Housing units, the definition can change over time. It's about, it's obviously a critical issue, but for the question of trying to answer capacity, it just didn't match. When we looked at the permits issued and it just, the definitions are kind of all over the place. And that's just the nature of housing data. So we, at this time, we didn't include it. Census data, we didn't include short term rentals. While we know over time, there was an increase. The having a license or a license cap kind of makes it muddies that whole, that whole conversation of are they really increasing now? And then parking counts, we've talked about that. I think that parking will be a very valuable tool in the future. It's just that trying to get parking is tough and it's a, it takes a lot to get, you know, parking measured on almost a real time basis. So it's kind of a work in progress that we talked about. So as we kind of took all this data and looked at it, and I won't go through every section of this report that we that we went through, but basically we tried to understand the trends seasonally. And from everything that we pointed to, like Julia said, two thousand and twenty one was a and Breckenridge is not the only community that saw this huge fluctuation of use. There were communities all over and destinations all over the Western US that saw their busiest year in two thousand and twenty one. And then resulting this summer in two thousand and twenty two, kind of a regression back down to more towards normal. And then we've seen that almost everywhere where two thousand and twenty one was almost more than a lot of places could handle. And then slowly it's starting to get a little bit back to normal. And whether that's people wanting to do travel to international countries again, to big cities again after COVID. It's tough to tell, but it was no other than that about very busy year, probably busiest year in Breckenridge's history, more than likely with how how many people were coming through town. The traffic counts were at an all time high, but we could tell. And especially winter of last year, winter of last year was very busy. And I'm sure everyone that lives here could probably attest to some of those really busy days. But it seems like it's kind of course correcting a bit back down. It's tough to tell. We'll see over time. The thing that we could tell, you know, looking through this data was that, you know, the really the resident base and every data source that we looked at didn't show, it showed maybe a slight increase in residents, a typical growth pattern of any community, but not any substantial growth patterns that we could tell. It was kind of just status quo, either what you'd expect to see or somewhat flat in certain areas. Trail counts have have been going up over time. I've, we've kind of seen this, this peak of of counts where you could see if you have data back to two thousand and ten, the kind of the period from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen, there was an increase from two thousand and fifteen to kind of two thousand and nineteen, there was a little bit of an increase. And then two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one were kind of a different ballgame with COVID kind of being thrown in the mix with that. But trail counts, we've seen similar increases over time. You know, some of these trail counts, like the B and B trail, we have data going back to and it's been a pretty stark increase, especially during, you know, peak season in July. Part of that was because the parking, parking lots, parking lot was expanded, allows a little more capacity, but also there is a more higher demand, obviously, for trail use. So kind of getting to, oh, getting to the kind of our conclusions, as Julia mentioned, I think, you know, we, of all the data sets that we we measured, it's obviously grown in use as a lot of communities have in Summit County. Two thousand and twenty one seemed to be kind of the peak. We're envisioning a lot of these numbers to probably come back down over the next couple of years or kind of remain at least steady to some degree, but it's hard to tell. It's one of those things where we need to monitor over time. And really to do proper monitoring, we wanted to build a tool for the town, especially the town staff to really be able to understand and look at change over time. Let's see if there's any indicators that we can be aware of as we're, as time goes on that we can say, okay, this is starting to hit a level of traffic counts that we saw in two thousand and twenty one, or that, you know, just be able to kind of have that red flag warning of like, this might be getting busy again. And to do that, we built two different dashboards. The first dashboard and apologize, I apologize if it's hard to read. My software went down right before I came here to perfect timing. Of course, because that's what it does. This dashboard is meant to be a simplified view of some of the key topics that we had identified in our analysis to monitor over time. This is internal facing. And what this is, is some of those key indicators that we we used as a in the, in the analysis. So we have traffic counts, we have lodging, we have occupancy rate, we have sales tax equivalent, and then we have a placeholder for parking data, which eventually will be added in. And what's nice about this is that we this, this will be hosted online. Some of these little glitches where the formatting doesn't match up does not look like that online. But we'll be, we'll, we set this up so you can compare seasonally. So right now we're looking at summer two thousand and twenty two versus summer two thousand and twenty, but you can change that to summer twenty two versus summer two thousand and twenty one. And kind of dynamically, it'll change some of those results for us to understand how does this summer, how is this year's season compared to one that we have data for in the past?
Can you do two thousand and twenty two and two thousand and nineteen?
Yes. So we have back here, back to two thousand and sixteen for what we for data that we have. So here's two thousand and twenty two. The two thousand and twenty two versus two thousand and nineteen as it updates, average daily vehicles is up. Average daily room nights and occupancy rate is down and then sales tax would be up. And like I said, some of these are the formatting stuff, it doesn't look like this online, but it is.
How do we normalize for occupancy rate? Because if you look at, especially as you gap it.
Yeah.
Um, you look at two thousand and twenty two versus two thousand and nineteen, we added how many units?
Yeah.
But did the actual, what the occupancy rate is based on, is it the same number of units or is it overall?
It's a, so they, it is overall. That's why we think that room nights is actually probably a better measure than occupancy because it's the physical number of room nights sold. But we put them both in there because they kind of both tell a story of if room nights is up and occupancy is down or vice versa, that's something to kind of dig into, you know, but I think, I think room nights is actually more important than occupancy because of that reason of the supply, you know, issue when you add supply, that'll bring occupancy down just naturally.
And that data comes from reported.
This comes from the BTO and they get it from a firm that does a lot of, most of the mountain towns.
That's metrics.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, but that's only what, sixteen properties?
Yeah, it's, I think they, they, I think they're, I don't, don't, I don't speak for them. It's
Twenty two?
Yeah, yeah. But it's, it seemed as a pretty good measure. It's not perfect. And I think, you know, things that they're obviously, they obviously missed some of the stuff in there, but it's the best, the best you can do on kind of a town level.
Hey, so Jake, on the average room nights, the eleven hundred and seventy one, is that twenty two or is that nineteen?
So that is twenty two. And then it's got, like I said, the formatting kind of looks weird. You can tell in the average daily vehicles, it would have, it has the two thousand and nineteen number in there. It's just that you can't see it because this view that I've got, I wish I had the online version, it would show two thousand and nineteen in the room nights.
For nineteen, if you can see it.
I can't. Let me see if I can pull it up. So the room nights is fourteen hundred and twenty, twenty nineteen for the same period. So this was on average during the summer of two thousand and twenty two, on average, is summer of two thousand and nineteen. So. Yeah. So this is a, this, like we said, we, we, you can switch between summer and winter. The big thing with winter is that, you know, last winter was big and it was a very busy winter last year. It'll be interesting to see how this winter pans out if it's kind of same trajectory or not. The other tool that we built to, so kind of that's a little bit more of an analysis tool is we built this traffic volume dashboard. And this is much more for someone who internally who really wants to dig into the data and understand it and play with it because you can do a lot with it. But basically, this is looking at C dot traffic volumes on Tiger Road over time. And we have this date filter where you can set what date do you want to set? And it has a lot more flexibility. So right now on it, we're looking at November of two thousand and twenty one versus April of two thousand and twenty two, last winter, basically. And we're comparing it as a filters to compare it to the same period, three years prior, two years prior, one year prior. So you can kind of understand what timeframe you're looking at and where do you want to compare to. For instance, if we looked at, you know, this, switching it from the the winter of two thousand and twenty two, comparing it to the winter of two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one, it is, you know, it's, you'll see some patterns over time. Basically, what we, we also measure is time, when do we see the most amount of traffic? So on Mondays, you see most amount of traffic right around, right around work and then work start. So you see more resident traffic versus on the Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The time shift a bit towards more people coming back down from the ski mountain compared to just the commuting times. So this dashboard, you know, you can, you can highlight things, you can select if you just want to look at Tuesdays, for instance, it'll shift all the data just to looking at Tuesday data and that allows you to kind of dig into some of those trends at a much more granular level.
And then at the bottom of that, you'll see the two horizontal bars. And that's, you know, you can see it's the local versus out of state commuters breakdown.
Yeah. So you can, the, the, the dark blue in the far right is Breckenridge local, the light blue is other Summit County residents. The, or the light orange is other Colorado residents. And then the, the dark red is out of state slash international visitors. And those are derived from the cellphone data. So kind of what we try to do and what we've done a lot is if there is a really reliable counter, we try to understand if we can overlay cellphone data around that counter. You can kind of get the best of both worlds because the trap, the problem with traffic counts, you don't know who's going by them. They're just numbers. But if you can try to add some context to it, it gives it quite a bit more power to to work with.
The part I'm not understanding, this is outside of what you're doing, but we always talk about how many locals we can house in the community. And I'm stunned that the other Summit County driver number is so small compared to the in Breckenridge resident number, which would, I mean, just from the surface would indicate we house a lot more Breckenridge local workers here than we think we do. Does that sound correct? And I don't, I mean, does that make sense?
Number.
What I expected, I thought it would be.
Please.
Commuters.
Yeah. And I think that could be, you know, it could be just a limitation of of how much volume of data you get from people that live in town versus out of town. I think you know, it's, there is, there's obviously some margin of error in that. I think also the, what you consider Breckenridge local may shift that number a bit.
Can you, can you create a polygon that includes the whole county for tracking that cellphone data to find out who's sleeping in Silverthorn, for instance?
You could. Yeah, we, so we only basically have to purchase the data by the geography you select. So the data that we purchase is only for the town.
Okay.
But you could, I mean, people do, people do statewide studies with it or county level. You can, so you can draw it on a map, you can get that kind of data.
It might be something worth us paying for.
Depending on how much it costs to be, even interesting to see Park County, Kremley, Leadville, Georgetown.
I know, we, county's done a, we, we just, I'm not involved with it, but other people at RRC have been doing a very big project for Pitkin County that look at very similar topics that we're talking about here, but at a county level for all of Pitkin. And they've been, they're finding a lot of the same conclusions, but it's a lot of that county level. You know, in migration, out migration, housing, same kind of topics, but at a county level.
So you, say you bought or we bought the, the numbers for Silverthorn, right? Now, would you have to spend time collecting those numbers or are those numbers already kind of rolled that you can just say, okay, let's, okay, we're going to buy into the Silverthorn and then we'll get the numbers for the last six months, years?
Yeah. So we, you can, so what we do is we purchase the raw data from a big data warehouse.
Okay, so it's already.
It's already collected. Yeah. And then we, we have to do a lot of cleaning and analysis with it, but it's there. And it's there and we can get it back to, we usually recommend not going back past two thousand and nineteen because the data seems to be really solid from two thousand and nineteen on, basically. So.
Yeah, I'd be really interested because I, I'm curious if with the amount of development in Silverthorn, if they are losing workforce, housing and workforce that used to commute here, living there.
Right.
To the, you know, people coming from the south.
Well, then we can also extrapolate to sort of childcare. And who's, you know, I mean, I think we could get a there's a ton of things that we anecdotally think, just like this study. Honestly, I think this was great because I think a lot of us thought there were more people that had just moved here and weren't leaving because you talked to some of these people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is really one of the reasons I want to see that. I think this is awesome.
Yeah.
What you guys have done.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, it's, it's sometimes even like our own, my own assumptions, your question when I see them like, okay, I was wrong. What would I thought? Because sometimes, a lot of times when you, you know, you hear some of those more vocal things of, oh, we see a lot of people coming in from moving in from out of town. But when you look at how big of a pot slice of the pie that is.
Right.
It's small, but it's noticeable just because it's different. But, you know, like I said, I, Breckenridge is similar to a lot of other towns across the West. Even up, you know, Yellowstone National Park saw its biggest visitation in two thousand and twenty one. And they, they came back to down to earth this year, and that's a part place I work in a lot. So I mean, it's, you're seeing the same patterns here as you are as a lot of other major destinations.
Describe even in retail, in the retail world as a COVID hangover.
Sure.
I mean, like, like saying the ski world, people, you know, okay, we can't do anything. Let's buy ski gear. And now they have all this ski gear, they might have not liked it and they're selling it. So the retail shops aren't doing well. I'm assuming it's the same as soft goods and new car, or actually cars are the chip thing would screw things up. But
Yeah.
Yeah. So COVID hangover, I think, is pretty, pretty apt description of it.
Well, I'm all, we've talked about too with it, with destinations, like it's not always good to be setting records of total number of people, sometimes manageable and a sustained number is what you want. And that's, you know, I think that's probably what it'll get down back to more than likely.
Also, I think it's a great baseline. I really look forward to it. It's very interesting from two thousand and nineteen to present. But I look forward to seeing what the next two or three years do as well. What's, what's the trend going to be?
Yeah. So I think these, you know, kind of just wrapping up, what we want to do is kind of do that retrospective, look at it, see what we're, you know, from our professional opinion, where things were at, but also then just put some tools in place so that over time you can have these kind of more at your fingertips to, to see how things have changed.
The two takeaways I saw that I found very encouraging was the average night stay increasing because that lessens the impact on our community.
Sure.
And then also the, the percentage of day visitor versus overnight visitor shifting where the larger percent of overnight. I would love to see those being highlighted and tracked as well because at least in in reading the grass, those seem very important to track and keep an eye on because that has a lot to do with what's happening, macro economy, what the BTO is doing and how we're succeeding as a overnight, as a destination town, more than just a you know, day trip, which is better for our economy, it's better for our environment and and overall congestion.
Yeah, I agree. And that's, you know, that's where your economic impact from tourism comes from is those overnight stays to day visitors bring, bring in, you know, a significant chunk of, of economic impact too, but the, those overnight stays are important. And now the BTO, we work with them really closely to monitor survey data that we do for them that they are constantly kind of looking at those numbers too. So it's, it's something I think we're tracking well. And it's, I think it's an important metric for sure.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
BTO also, thank you Lucy and Belle for constantly being involved in this process too. So they, they had their eyes on this for sure.
Yep.
Huge pat on their back, as Jay was saying, you know, that the shift to out of state overnight and the stays being longer is exactly where we want to go. If, if we're going to have growth, that's where you want it to come from. So.
Yeah.
But that also remind us all that sometimes But I'd also remind us all that, uh, sometimes unless crowded product is a better product and, and Breckenridge is a product. You know?
Any other question?
Questions about the whole. Whole thing? Well, we, we do want to maybe talk about going forward, good, doing maybe a separate, sort of a separate study to get some of this other data. But, um, I mean, other than, you know, adding the, the sewer data, I think this is. Really awesome.
Sewer and the, uh.
Yeah, yeah. But that's almost a separate, that's not really capacity analysis.
No.
That's more for our analysis housing and who's really living here now, who, you know, who's in commuting.
Hmm.
Cool. Yeah. I, I think that's just critical to everything that we talk about all the time. And. Listen, in the end, this answered a bunch of questions. That we've been, you know, sort of mulling over about, you know. Why does it feel so crowded? What's going on? One, all right, now we got the answer. So.
Could we?
Excellent. Now, now we know how to proceed.
Sure.
It's really, which was the whole point.
Yep.
So thank you.
Yep.
We need to remember that in, in twenty nineteen. People were screaming, why is it so crowded? This is, this is unsustainable. This is, you know? So.
Yep. Like I said, you're not unique though, too. It's, it was, it was a influx at a lot of big destinations and I think a lot of people were trying to ask the same questions, you know, so.
Yeah. It also answers sort of, you know, how we have. As a group, sort of been looking back at twenty nineteen as an, as an actual year rather than twenty.
Hmm. Yeah.
Twenty twenty one or twenty two, which were very aberrant years. And as we go forward, we keep talking about, well, let's look back at twenty nineteen because that, that's really where the. That's where the plot goes, not, you know.
Yep.
Where, where it did go. So.
Agreed. Agreed.
The only thing with this that would be interesting to try and capture, we had. In twenty twenty one, the cast Northwest cog study really on remote workers, hard time residents, how they were spending time in our community. Um, being able to see if those trends continue well past COVID or not.
Yeah. And I think one of the, you know, you mentioned length of stay. And I think that's something that, you know, the ability to work remote allowed people to say, I'm going to come for a week instead of four or five days. I'm going to work for a couple of days and but have a full week here. So I think that, you know, the ability to work anywhere you want does increase people's flexibility a lot, especially remote workers living here and visiting here too. So.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Great job.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, planning commission decisions. You just going to sit there and keep doing it or?
Sure. You have questions?
I don't know. Uh, what kind of call up we going to get tonight? Dick, anything? What do you want to do?
The standard question.
Uh, are there any questions on, uh?
You know, one thing just to point out, Eric is, uh. You know, I, I, I think we're all thinking long and hard a little bit about, you know, the, um. And I think it's, it's okay as approved. Um, but you know, if we're going to allow the, you know, if we're going to continue to allow. Outdoor space, retail restaurant on top of parking to, to, you know, displaced parking. What's, what's the aggregate effect to town? Then I think it's just something that we should. Um. Just consider.
Yeah.
You know?
Well.
And it, it brings, you know, the positives are it brings vibrancy.
Right. Which we like.
To, to the core, um, having outdoor dining, it's awesome. Um, you know, the downside is we're losing parking in our. Arguably our most congested time of year in the summer.
But if we can figure out how to move that, you know, especially where, where these guys are located. If we can, if we can get those people to move to the structure.
Yes.
More often, I think that does, serves us better than parking in his.
Yeah.
In his backyard where I think we're getting a better benefit. I think that other question and Shannon and I talked about this a bit is that employee piece. Remember we talked a while ago about not requiring housing or parking for anyone that created employee housing in the core. We, I think we need to bring that back and discuss it because with what happened, um, above Fiesta Jalisco. Where they came back and said, we can't rent anybody because they can't have a car. We need a, I don't know if we figure out a, a reservoir down at the airport. Where we carve out some place and they, you have a car, but you have to go, you know, you gotta take a bus to get your car. Because that was part of that, if you recall.
Or maybe Eric, we create some lower. AMI housing, maybe if, if you want to have your parking requirement waived for, for in the core employee housing. We, we require a, uh, we put a rent cap on it.
Those people still have cars, I think is the real.
I know they do.
Where are we going to, where are we going to house their cars? So.
For sure. I think we probably need to do both, but I always wonder when somebody says I can't rent because of this.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, maybe you're charging too much. That might not be worth as much rent if somebody can't park on.
Yeah.
So if we can, at some point. Bring that discussion back. Um, but thank you for doing it and going through all the steps. I know it was painful, but we appreciate it. Oh no, no, you did what we asked you to do.
No. No, I thought it was fine. I just think it, it makes us think about, you know. Potential impacts that happens a lot and how do we mitigate them?
All right. Anything else for planning? Killer. Thank you.
Yeah, it is. Yep.
We agree.
Righty. Legislative review and we'll start with the, uh, alcohol takeout and delivery permit required.
Mayor and council, this is the second reading of the ordinance that would require any establishment who receives a state only alcohol takeout and delivery permit. To notify the town within 10 days of receiving the permit, there are no changes from first reading.
Questions of staff? All right. We'll see for a second reading. Still some land use guidelines amendment for first reading. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Hi.
I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our newest planner, Michelle Dolmire.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Michelle's been here for a few weeks now. Um, you recall Chapin left about four months ago. And so we were able to fortunately replace his position.
Upgrade.
Yeah.
Tell them I said that too. It's like you get for leaving like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to bust on them every meeting coming up. Every time you show up, we'll say something mean about you. I'll make a note of that.
He'll take it from here.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, nice to meet you all. So as a result of the workforce housing, uh, concept that you all were planning, um, for the Stables Village Development on Stillson's property. Staff have created a new land use district, um, number forty six, which is in your packet. So the parcel is currently, um, land use district one and fifteen. It's kind of half and half. Um, so this new land use district forty six will accommodate the proposed eight units per acre density for the area. And then on January seventeenth, the planning commission recommended that the town council approve the land use district forty six for the property. And I'll be available for any question.
Um. Does this exactly meet the boundaries of what the? Developer plan, because it looks like a bigger, it looks bigger than the actual plan set. When we were out there.
So it does go across the road to kind of line up with the current zoning. Is that what you mean?
Um, no, I'm actually talking about the part that's going into land use fifteen, um, clo- in, into the public works property.
It's probably phase two.
And that's, we wanted to make, I mean, that was really.
No, th- this was just, um. And, and we'll make sure, we'll, we'll double check this afterwards, but it's meant to follow that drainage sway align.
Ah.
Um, next to the development and not go beyond that.
And there's not supposed to be a phase two in this.
There's no phase two, yeah.
Do it, but.
Yeah. And we're leaving the land use district. The same for the other areas, which would not allow this type of development to happen.
I mean, don't let Michelle pull a trick on us. Like after we're dead and gone, all of a sudden, you know, there's a Walmart there. So. So, yeah.
Phase two.
You know, you know, you know what our intentions are.
It looks like it's.
We want to keep this one and done.
Not phase two.
I mean, it looks like from what we looked at when we were on the ground there, where, you know, it does look like it goes farther past those trees than what we had. Pointed out when we were there. So if you can just check that mark, that'd be, yep, great.
We'll see rank and flats pop up there, you know? Yeah, with, it's by the jail, by the way. What's that? It'd just be by the jail.
Uh, other questions for staff? All right. We'll have this for first reading. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, municipal prosecutor agreement by resolution.
Mayor Council, this is, um, a proposed, um, uh, annual renewal, I guess, so to speak of the, um, prosecutor retainer agreement. There are no changes from last year other than a nominal boost increase in the salary. And we are making it clear that he is entitled to the recreation pass and a town hall parking pass. Let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Questions? All right. Thank you. Uh, public projects. Hi.
Mayor and council. So this week's memo focused on outlining our approach for the Riverwalk project. What we're hoping to do is bring the project to you in chunks for discussion and feedback to move the project forward. So we want.
Sound like that's going to work.
That does.
You sound very skeptical. Your tone of voice, like you don't really trust us at all.
Um, no, I fully trust you.
As you should.
So we wanted to get feedback if this will work for you, if you think we've gotten all of the topics you'd like to discuss. I did under G in the outline, leave a spot for other topics if you wanted me to add something. And, uh, we think this approach will work great. I also outlined what the twenty twenty three projects are we're moving ahead on. The materials management center near Watson Ave, as well as the design work for our future underpasses.
Questions?
So this is for. One hundred block north and one hundred blocks south. The first session. Correct? The living lab review.
So after project goals, the living lab review is the things we implemented between Watson and Ice House Alley. So, yeah. One hundred north, one hundred south.
Gotcha. But then we're also talking about enclosures that ended in Jefferson during twenty twenty three.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm just talking about that first.
What we call the living lab is what we implemented last summer with the new rec path spur, the circulation, the alley, the changes to the delivery zone and that sort of. Those steps.
So the first conversation in February, that just set a super high level to all get on the same page literally. Yeah. I think that's a great approach.
Lot of time for that one. And you know, this is very loose as council agendas change and how we progress to work. This could change, move around quite a bit.
I know that you could. Theoretically, you could stuff a whole bunch into this bag that you're, that especially when you open it up to other topics. And so I'm not sure what. Is appropriate and how much ba- how much room that bag has. Um, but I think that one, some of the major things that may fit in there is like that South Main. Um, I'm sorry, South Park crossover by Main Street Station. And, um, like that pedestrian crossover. Um, and how that is intertwined into this. If we're trying to figure out a pedestrian slash bicycle route that runs through. Town, I think that should be included. We're talking about tunnels, bridges, barriers. Um. Does that, does that fit in there? Um, I also was thinking about some of those I bring up later is just kind of. A. Like a river restoration to beautify like around the river where. On South Main, you have these park areas that are inviting, that bring people down to the river, that kids are playing in the river. And then as you creep towards, you know, north of Lincoln Ski Hill, it becomes a little bit more seedy, a little bit more, um, overgrown, wild. And it's like, where, where does that fall on trying to make that as aesthetically appealing? And whether that's kind of in this scope or if that's outside of the scope.
Sure. For your first one, the village crosswalk, I think that's what you're talking about, the pedestrian activity there. I think that falls a bit more into the highway nine corridor. I think we'd want to talk about it with this as we're trying to route pedestrians and bikes. But if we want to get down to the nitty gritty of, could we build something? I would probably put that into the bag with the corridor project. Personally, river health, river improvements, I think could be part of this if council wishes.
I'm sure you have.
Yeah, I figured that would go in just overall project goals.
Yeah. And goals if river health or. River interaction could be part of the goals discussion and then staff could focus. You know, resources and consultants on that as we develop it.
I wouldn't mind setting some goals and they might stop being by months, but by years. We're starting to look at and planning, taking it further south. I mean, I really think we need to start giving some, some love to the south end of, of town. We focus a lot on that center core. And, um, and including north as we should, because it's pushing that way. But I, you know, I think we need to not all of a sudden be reactionary because the south had, had become dormant. I think. I mean, my ultimate goal would be to have a. A vibrant walking path, not an alley, but a walking path. Um. At, at least the main street station. I know Todd wants to take it all the way to the ice rack. Someday that.
Wants to go fair play. Yeah, he went, yeah. He was fair play to Frisco, is what he was talking.
Talk about this when we met as staff, we discussed how this initial Riverwalk project is probably the downtown core. Like French Street to South Park Ave, but we probably need. Projects to build on this that go both further north and further south. Because as we add housing to the north, Airport Road and that section, and then what it looks like south of, South Park. I think are part of this, but probably next phases, not something we want to throw. In with this, it might be a little bit unmanageable.
But part, just to go back to where we started from. The, the genesis of this was. That area that we're talking about right now is the broken piece. The Riverwalk works.
Not for all of us, I don't think.
But the Riverwalk works. I mean, the Riverwalk is a Riverwalk that people can walk on. You know, we have serious pedestrian conflict in the hundred north and hundred south, which is why we started there. That was the genesis of it. And we all agreed that, you know, the. You may not think the Riverwalk works. I agree that the materials piece doesn't and the, the trucks don't, but you can actually walk and not worry about getting run over. For a good portion of the Riverwalk and that's why we started here. That, that was the genesis of it.
Yeah, I, I don't want to argue about that. I just feel like. We really need to work on the south, you know, we, we also were talking about, remember during COVID. We lit up all those trees back there and how vibrant that south end felt with. With its being so animated, because we were trying to spread people out. We were trying to spread, you know, reduce the congestion on Sparky Lot and take it. Um. Just need, like. At the south end of town and, and I, you know, and I think. Many of us were hoping that, that that would be a part of this as well. And so I'm, I still hope that. I, I really don't think it works at all in the south end. I, it, it might not be quite as dangerous as the, but you know, we might have flew some parking if we don't want to be so dangerous. You know, it's, it's, uh, it, it's, it's an alley. You know, there's trash trucks, there's delivery trucks. Um, it's got grease all over it. It's, it's an alley. You know, it's not a Riverwalk anymore to the south. And that's to nobody's fault. It just, we need to do some planning.
Well, that's what that whole material management thing is. It's about changing this so they're not on the.
That's first step. I don't want to stop there is my point. So I.
I don't think we ever, I mean, this talked about stopping there. We talked about doing this all the way down. I, I think the, the place that it stops though, honestly, is getting over to Main Street Station is the difficult piece.
Yep.
The rest of it all falls in sync.
Equally as hard as Ski Hill Road. I mean, they're both hard.
Yeah, I think that's even harder though. I think that's harder than Ski Hill Road.
They're both gonna be hard.
I, I think that's harder though, just because of the traffic, because of the speeds and it's a highway. We have no, we have no control over that, that part of the road. So that, that makes it a lot more difficult, so.
True.
Dick, just to clarify, when you're talking about it feeling like an alleyway, you're talking the portion of the Riverwalk that goes to South Park.
Correct. Yeah, South Park to the north that Adams at least are really almost to the plaza.
And that will be a part of our discussions.
Yeah, I had that under the like peak nine, peak 10 enclosure. So that will the time to discuss those blocks leading with what we're gonna do to the materials management to help us.
Well, that's first step. I mean, that's the biggest challenge. We have multiple um, materials management enclosures.
And we'll solve for that and then see what improvements can be built upon those changes.
Tackle, cause it's not easy. We tackle the delivery challenges in the 100 block. It, it's gonna have to play at the 300 and 400 block as well.
Absolutely. If we have questions about any other public projects, we are accepting bids this week, I believe, for overlay and concrete as well as the Warriors Mark sidewalk there. So we'll bring those back to council as requested, especially for the Warriors Mark sidewalk.
When does work start back at the tarn? I know it seems like we just stopped, but uh, are we thinking April or is it later than that?
They'll probably come back in the February, beginning of March. They'll be remobilizing to the site, start managing some of the snow and do some early work in preparation. We're gonna have another busy season out there.
Um, just give a little update about the signage we're trying to get out uh, by Watson Roundabout for snow sculpture.
Sure. So trying to add on to what we have out there for the roundabout, we've put up, I believe, already some more signage with the lane drop there for that right-hand turn up Ski Hill Road. We're also gonna add some graphic signage, giving better direction to I-70 as well as Highway nine south to 285 to help people make good decisions as they're exiting the parking garage. Because we're being told people will exit, then they'll turn onto Watson and then they'll try to turn on the main street, which is not really a smart maneuver if you're trying to get anywhere. So we're working hard to get some of that graphic signage for that way finding up prior to this weekend.
Good luck with that.
Well, the crazy thing is, is that even if the greatest signage is up, people are just crazy. I just like, I just couldn't believe, the sign that is up for going up Ski Hill Road is right there, very clear. And still the, you know, people don't want them to go around them. So they're like in the middle of the two lanes and.
Seedy and, seedy and crazy. Very cynical crowd up here. He's calling the river. Anything else? Great, thank you. All right, mobility. Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, no real formal uh, mobility update today. I did wanna throw in there that uh, for the snow sculptures this weekend, the free ride and the summit stage will be providing shuttles from Colorado Mountain College to Eflot and Ski Resort is gonna be uh, supporting with shuttles like they normally do from airport to uh, the station. So I think we're gonna be pretty well set up for getting people around town.
How's the dog thing working out?
For us, it's working great.
I've had just so many, you know, so many kinda compliments on that.
Yeah, it, it's just answered a lot of questions, really. Made it simple for people, so. Um, yeah.
Jeffrey, people are really appreciative.
Yeah. And I don't even have a dog.
Hey Matt, one of the things that um, I was just kinda curious about was i- in uh, my daughter had a competition in Vail a couple of weeks ago. And so we, we spent the time in Vail and navigated from the garage to where we're supposed to go. And the, in, in town, the, the buses are extremely inviting. Uh, where the, the first step is low. It's not the giant first step that we have. The individual steps are lower. Um, the uh, there's a lot of digital signage saying where it's going. And I was just wondering if for our in-town routes, if we've ever looked at a, trying to make the public transportation piece of getting around the core be more um, easy to use, uh, user friendly, a better user interface for our guests and our locals that are just trying to get from one end of town to the other, or from Airport Road to the gondola, or the gondola to uh, the ice rink or whatever it is. And if that's been something that you guys looked at, if you know the effect, it just, it seemed as a visitor myself so intuitive and very, and even with two small kids, just where it's usually trying to grab their stuff and lift them up, like where they're stepping right up and getting in. And it's just, um, it's almost a, it feels like a reinvention of public transportation where it's a lot more welcoming. The doors are wider, the whole thing. I was just kinda curious if that's anything we've ever looked at.
Yeah, I think it's something that we would uh, continue to explore. Um, I mean, the buses that they use are very similar to the buses that we as the Free Ride use. Uh, Gillig is kind of the main platform that most of us use. They do have their new Gilligs that are electric that we're very interested in. And those ones might be the ones with the lower floor that you might be seeing. Um, but they should be very similar to the buses that we're operating currently. Um, so while they may look different from the outside, they should be fairly similar. Obviously, the Ski Resort has a much different type of bus than we do unrelated.
It's gonna be on belay. Get on a high ski area bus, those bluebirds are, you know, they're death trap.
I would say um, we're absolutely open and I would love to hear any more feedback anybody ever gets from any operation, because we would love to improve our service, so.
Vail has those like, the graphic signs inside the buses, right?
Inside and outside, so it's like, you know exactly where it's. It's just the, the wayfinding, it just seems, the whole experience just seems very welcoming and um, encouraging to take where um, I just thought it was a great experience.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get some takeaways. I appreciate the feedback.
Give Greg Hall a call and see how we compare. And also as we look at new technology for our buses, what would it take to have some more signs inside that are more friendly, understandable?
You know, anytime you go somewhere different and you see something that works and you see people using it and happy about using it, it's just an interesting takeaway.
Great, thank you. Anything else? You're sustainability person as well tonight.
Oh, nice.
Anything else on mobility? I think the bad bus has been great lately. Sustainability questions?
With the additional drop sites for compost, is there any way that we're tracking the amount of compost we're collecting? Or has there been a uptick in?
I actually do not know the answer. I'll probably need to get back to you on that. Um, I know that we are tracking it, but I don't know exactly the numbers that we're getting at. This one's fairly new, so.
Anecdotally, it seems like it's just a lot that the place at uh,
By the stables.
By the stables, getting a lot of use. Um, and uh, also I, I wondered if, is there, you know, um, at the other recycling center, there's a, just a dumpster for um, for cot- or cottons, you know, like soy milk, you know, for milk cottons. Um, and uh, would that be possible to have at our place?
Stables?
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah, you know, like, you know, the, uh, I, I think, what's it called? Food container.
I think the problem is they don't really have, you know, the haulers to just make material sites everywhere. So they did the compost because we're trying to get people to do compost so that it's more um, streamlined when we get into pay as you throw.
Yep.
But they can't just have big trucks going to every location. And part of the site, part of the thing about the site that's next to the stable slot is it's tiny. And it's like, you pull it, pull out, so like big trucks can't even.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the gate's tiny is what you're saying, the entrance.
The gate and it's a in and out, you know, it's not.
I'll go ahead.
I was just wondering if we put a compost um, at Alta Verde one, did we put an actual bin there? Cause I thought that was the point of making the enclosures bigger, was that we could put compost, a compost bin into each of those.
I don't think we did, okay?
It'd be nice if we didn't. I feel like part of our problem is we're always trying to retrain, retrain. Whereas if, while people are moving in, if it's already in there. Yep. A good transition.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
I'm sure I could just ask Kelly this, because it's probably a, 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 a very logical answer. But why, why do we put an extra barrier to composting with forcing people to register to get the code? Is that just so it doesn't just get regular trash dumped in?
Contamination. We wanna make sure people that are invested in it are having access to it. We don't just wanna throw it away.
But is that a real thing? Because all of the other ones are not. You can just put your trash in one of the other ones then, put it in the metal recycle.
But we don't have that out there. You just have compost. I will tell you that so
Now at the others.
Where we have our compost in our arse, if my guys leave it unlocked, the neighboring restaurants who all know about our compost dump their trash. It's a, it's a serious, and that is a wasted load of compost. Then it's just all trash unless you get in there and pull it out. So I think it's vital that we make sure that the people that are doing it buy into the program and know what they're doing.
See, we're not, we're not, we're not afraid of people stealing the coffee.
More that they're gonna add their own stuff to it.
Yeah, exactly. I think it's more of a, a education loop than it is a barrier. You really, people are not accustomed to composting. They almost need a quick, quick little reminder.
Um, the, the first part of this with the two thirds of residential customers do not currently have outside recycling. I was talking to Shannon about it a bit, and part of that was people that got annoyed at the haulers, that they didn't think we're doing the right thing.
That'd be me.
Yeah, how are we gonna ensure, I mean, we're pushing this pay as you throw program, but we're not, are we gonna ensure that the haulers?
I think we have.
We don't, some of us don't think they're doing currently.
We have to find them. I mean, I think there needs to be some teeth in the ordinance. You know, and I mean, there's, there's gotta be consequences for them to prevent them from doing that.
Because we'll hear from people that we're now gonna force to.
Taking pictures of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Video, multiple times.
Yeah. And I think that we'll have, we'll see some uh, level of solution in the new role that we're hiring for, that sustainable material managing person is going to, you know, that'll be a focus for them for sure, so.
Cause we need to rebuild the trust.
Yeah.
And rebuild, you know, cause I, I think there's a low level right now.
Saying, you taking photos of what? Of videos of what?
Of the, of the haulers putting
Recycling in the
I get you, I get you. Trash and vice versa and both residential and commercial.
Well.
And was that recently or was that back?
I, not recently. This was previous, what?
Doesn't recycle anymore, so. I mean, he doesn't recycle at his curbside anymore, right?
I don't, I don't, correct.
So.
Yeah, I just take it, cause you know, then I can do glass, so I just do it all at once.
Management fee, um, those invoices went out yesterday and today, so uh, they're all due by April 1st. So just in case you see those come around.
Um, I'll just add on the pay as you throw piece. There was a long discussion at the manager's meeting last Thursday. Um, and I think it was a good conversation. There was a lot of uh, history provided on the landfill itself. And you know, how it came into being and how it got to where it is today, which is obviously much more professional than it was before. Um, and as, as well as Jesse providing a history of pay as you throw and how that conversation started, the consultants that have been involved and the involvement of, of all of the communities in that process. Uh, I think we got to a fairly good point at the end of that discussion. I think Dylan and Silverthorn are both interested in potentially having Jesse come to their councils and have a conversation with them. Um, I don't know if you all recall, but last year when HC3 and the consultant came and presented to all the councils, those two groups just didn't feel like they got what they wanted out of that discussion. And we feel like with Jesse's expertise and what we've already gone through, that she really has or is in a unique position to present to them. So they were both very interested in that. So we may be able to see them coming on board here with pay as you throw at some point soon. Uh, one thing that I did say that I would mention to you, and I mentioned it to Eric this morning, right before the meeting, the county got a topo study of the landfill and had, based on that um, study and maybe some additional information, they have determined that they can keep the landfill for probably 22 more years. Um, so they think the life is extended at some point.
Asked what they were thinking.
Oh, right, oh.
So like 2070 instead of 2050. Yeah, so we can stop doing anything.
I, I did tell them I did not believe that that would change your mind, that you probably would not be inclined to kick the can down the road because of that, but.
Well, the other piece to that is that might be because we're doing a better job of managing our materials. If, if we go backwards or don't continue to get better, then that's gonna shrink.
And we all agreed that we have a, a common interest in working together on um, construction waste and potentially banned materials like cardboard at the landfill. So I, hopefully that group will get back together and continue to talk about how we can all work together.
That's good news, though.
Yeah, it is.
But we can't take our foot off the gas. We gotta keep pushing everybody to get on board with this. Anything else for Matt? Thank you. Uh, housing childcare. I already forgot what it was. I know, seriously, man.
Have some minutes from the childcare meeting that are in your packet. And Corey can probably answer any questions if you have any on those. I wanted to give you a quick update on um, Alta Verde and Block 11 and Justice Center, just verbal. Um, so Alta Verde, I talked with Kimball this morning. They are still receiving plenty of applications, so really don't need additional pushes, cause that came up, whether we should be really y- you know, trying to push more applicants. Um, right now, she prefers the steady um, number that they have coming in. Cause where they get challenged is when they just get overwhelmed with the quantity of applications. And they're still seeing a lot of folks over income. Um, I think she told me uh, like yesterday, they surpassed 100 people that they've denied because of over income. So I don't know out of how many applications that was, but that's 100 over income folks.
That's the Lytech.
Yeah, that's Lytech, yeah. Um, but um, they're still at 14 um, occupied units and 13 that are in the compliance check. And what they're seeing is sort of interesting. Um, I mean, people are failing for 250 bucks over income. I mean, they are failing for just being slightly over income. They're not, it's not like they're super over income. Um, I mean, they pass through the first vetting because it appears they're going to um, be okay. And so they get into the full compliance check and then the employer is like, well, and I'm giving them a raise and blah, blah, blah. And it's like, we don't, we don't need to hear that. Um, but um, it's really, um, that's what's really been frustrating for the lease up is the number that are so, so close. And you know, if we were doing this three months from now, when we had updated AMI, it'd be a totally different situation because we're all expecting the 23 AMI to be up. Obviously incomes have been going up and we know how outdated AMI is anyway. Um, so with all the recent sort of wage increases and salary increases, um, you know, we're hoping that's gonna be at least reflected somewhat in the 23. And these folks that are so close, April typically, but HUD's already gone on record and say maybe late this year. But um, you know, just a few months away from all of these people potentially qualifying. I, I mean, that has to do with the um, AMI and it being, you know, five years ago is basically what I AMI is. So um, I mean, she, um, this morning she was super, super confident. She just said it's slow and steady. She has absolutely no concerns that this isn't gonna lease up, but it's just slow and steady, so. Uh, that was her comment.
Those people's information and tell them like
In the event, they're still not leased up.
Or
Yeah. Oh, yeah. In the event, you know, there's, she fully expects they will be leased up before AMI comes out, which is unfortunate. Um, but yeah, in the event, um, they're gonna have a long list of folks that will probably in April, May.
Left, right? Because they can't find out. This, see, this is, this is devastating. This, see, this is, this is devastating. That people are failing and, and the fact that we can't use a projected AMI or be able to. Do an end around somehow is just, it's such an injustice to the community members that make this town run. It, it's, it's hard to hear that.
It's why every project is not Lytech for sure. I mean, we, I mean, we've always been very proud of the program. Because we have a diversity of, um, products and you know, you do need some very low income apartments. This just happens, I think, to be bad timing with AMI, cause if this were three or four months later, these people would be qualifying. But yeah, Lytech is very, very challenging and we certainly, um, don't need to do another one for a while. Um, and that's why I think Altavere two is kind of exciting, cause no Lytech. So, but that's, that's an update on Altavere. She's really confident, um, but yeah, it's just those very low AMIs are.
Has anyone ever tried to apply for a variance with the feds?
Well, you know, when Crested Butte opened their nine percent Lytech project a few years ago, it was slow to absorb. I mean, now it's completely full and always full. Um, but it, it was slow to absorb and I think the feds are, they're probably not gonna change the rules around Lytech. Um, but obviously we can continue to harp on that every time we talk to people about grants. We're like, AMIs are super important to us when we talk about the strings that come with grants. So we can continue to, every time we talk to our. You know, state officials and federal officials is, you know, flexibility on AMI. The AMI is just not realistic up here.
Any way we can help these people, like, I know the county has a couple of different projects that they're getting ready to open up. Can we make sure and give them the contact information to get them? So that they stay looped in instead of just feeling completely helpless?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Kimball about what they do with their list that they, um, they turn down and how we can really get them. Um, go on a different path that might work better.
Cause if they're that close, I can't imagine how they're making anything else work up here.
I mean, that's the most frustrating part for Kimball's staff, she said, is it's just, you know, they think they're in. And it comes up, they're just a couple hundred bucks over. Um, but we will continue to fight the AMI issue, cause it's a big issue up in resort communities.
You already say how many units are filled?
Just fourteen are occupied, but thirty are in that compliance check. And then they have twenty appointments this week to see if they're going to submit them for compliance. Cause basically you get through the first vetting and that's where those thirty are. They're in the second vetting. Then they're talking to twenty people this week that are new people that, to see if they can get them into compliance, so, slow and steady.
Despite the disappointment, and, and I think we're all frustrated with Lytech, the place will eventually be full.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it will be full. I mean, it'll, you know, like, I do remember Crested Butte was, you know, worried about it and. But Kimball's like, no, this is just slow and steady and, um. So, um, the next project on Block eleven and, and pretty soon you may notice that we start calling this. Uller Apartments. We're gonna come to you all with a, um, uh, resolution to actually get it. So it's not called Block eleven apartments anymore. And, um, so we've been tossing around the name Uller, but, um, we do have people living in Uller. Um, and, um, you know, this also, this project also has been a bit frustrating just because it's been, you know. Our expectations were that we would have it open a while ago, when this, you know, when all three buildings finally do get open. Um, you know, we'll probably be sixty days late from what we had initially expected. And that's more of an issue with our initial expectation as it is to what it costs or takes to build a project like this. Um, this has really only been a fourteen month build and, you know, you get something built in sixteen days. You're doing good, so the fourteen month build is still impressive. It's just our, more of our expectations. We were hoping to have this before Christmas and, um. You know, we did make some decisions that slowed it down, um, that saved us money. We're gonna end up saving about two million dollars on this project. Um, we did things like crushing the rock on site as opposed to just getting it delivered, you know, so that added time, so. Um, you know, we're pretty happy with this project too, even though, um, managing our expectations has been our greatest challenge on this one. Uller Apartments.
What is that?
Uller Apartments. Or, I mean, we're, we're open to, but we don't want you all naming the projects again.
We, Ulla Heights really bogged this meeting down. We started talking about naming stuff.
I saw, I thought when I saw it come through planning that they had solar panels on the carports. When I walked by it the other day.
They are there, they're, they're, yeah, they're, they're, um, not elevated or slanted up or call that, they're, um, yeah, they're there. Yeah, and we walked through it. We're gonna bring you all through it probably, um, once we get, um. The, the construction more sort of wrapped up and probably towards spring or summer. Really, really nice apartments. And then, uh, Justice Center, um, the exciting thing about Justice Center is that, um, our, our plans are with the state. Going through the state review of the boxes, so that's super important step. And I think we're gonna have, um, the state review completed within a week or so, so, um, that'll be great. Boxes should be on the factory line, um, starting in April, um, which is just around the corner. Um, and delivered to the site, um, between June and August. And, um, take about six months to stitch them once they're on the site, so. Coming along and those are gonna be some nice apartments too. And I heard the governor say that only takes eighteen days to build one, so. It's taking us a little bit longer than that. But all good.
I know that everyone's sick of hearing me talk about this, but are we looking around for where we can put some solar? So that we're offsetting some of the energy use of these projects?
Particular, um, we had talked about, you know, we weren't not going to achieve net zero, so we had calculated. Um, and we know the amount of PV that we need and, um, yeah, it's on our list, how we make that pull.
I think there's some slots in the Highlands we could.
I think that's kind of it on housing unless you guys have any other questions and then chat.
You know what I, I would like to have, you know, I'm sure you don't have it at the top of your head, but I would like to talk, find out. The per capita, the percentage of homes that we, affordable housing homes or workforce housing homes that we built. Or caused to be built. So I think you could include the, the Wellington and Gibson Heights, um, and, and some others.
It was like twelve hundred last time I checked and that was things we had participated in in any way. Annexation agreement, buy downs, housing helps, um, water cap fees, out of town water. Um, I mean, we have basically, I don't think there's any affordable housing that's been built. Steed restricted that hasn't had some level of participation from the town. I mean, maybe Kings Ridge at Beaver Run, maybe they didn't have to do that. That was probably part of entitlement though, so.
So, but, um, so what I'd like to have that number, have that compared to a per capita in our community. And compare that to any other community in, uh, the Rocky Mountain West or even anywhere. I would, I would, I would wager that we are up there with any, any town in America. Um, or any, but it would have to be a resort, but any, any community. The amount that we built, cars we built compared to the amount of, uh, the population.
Yeah, I, I look at it. I don't know, um, you know, typically we look a lot at the percent of our workforce that we're housing, so we compare it. People that are living in town that are working in town.
Yeah, but I, you know, be, you know, just because what is a hard and fast number, people come in and out of our community as far as our workforce. But what a hard and fast number is, is the general population. Um, and, uh, you know, I think you just use a, um, calculator. Well, we know what the, we, yeah, we know fairly well what the, uh, census is.
Well, percent of deed restricted units to permanent population.
I don't know why I want it, I just do.
It's a lot.
How well we're doing?
Yeah, I think, I think we have done, I think it's second to none perhaps, you know, certainly. Maybe Pitkins up there, but I don't know. I doubt it.
Right, I don't know, it'd be interesting.
In, in Pitkins a county, but where is a community?
Can I ask a childcare question?
Sure.
Um, since you guys were brainstorming, maybe what some of the other tasks or buckets that you guys are gonna continue working on. Um, Shannon and I met with Elizabeth Lawrence and she was talking about how with the, um, statewide preschool. Um, Upper Blue, I think, added a. Classroom to theirs and so it seems, and then I know that some of our preschools have some space and so it sounds like pretty cool. Is not really, um, the waitlist issue. And I know that Lori and I had talked about putting out, um, an RFP for the new childcare center. So I feel like those are a little bit at odds with each other because if we take the preschoolers from our existing facilities. Then they're all gonna need to be more heavily subsidized, which is fine if we have a plan for that. So what I was wondering if the childcare, um, committee could talk about is what. You know, should the RFP be a full center? Should it be an infant toddler center only? And if it was gonna be that, um, how would we subsidize that? I did get some updated waitlist numbers and it looks like, um. About a hundred and sixty of the people who are on the waitlist live in the Upper Blue. And so that is a considerable number of people on the waitlist. And then about two hundred of those. Four hundred kids that are on the waitlist are zero to thirty-two months, which would be babies and toddlers. So we do demonstrate a need for that age group. It's just how we would make that work. And I feel like maybe the committee could give us a lot of ideas about that.
The other thing I'd like to somehow square is. With the new capacity analysis, there's no growth in the school system. Yet no matter what we do, this number keeps increasing. Where are those kids going? If the school, are, are we just, I don't know if it's just a shuffling and we just have a, a majority of the daycare?
Well.
Now that go into a school system that's county wide or what? Because that doesn't make sense. With the discussions we have about this need for childcare.
Well, we did have, I mean, as it gets more expensive to live here, then people, everyone has to work, so they're, you know, stay at home parents are pretty rare. We had a lot of in-home childcare centers closed, like, three to five years ago. We had ten or twelve for a while. That's a lot of kids. And so that's definitely a portion of them. I mean, I think it's, and then I think there has always been waitlist. I mean, that's why we built Timberline and. So I just think that number is there and we've done a different type of managing of waitlists and things like that in the past. And I mean, so I really grilled the facilities as to are these numbers real? And they really, I mean, I can give you all the information, you know, about eighty-two of these people are not clicking on the waitlist to see. Is there, is their, um, name moving up, you know, where are they? So they figure. Those people are probably, they could drop off or they don't live here or whatever. But the rest of them, so three hundred plus are active. And I understand you questioning it. I think we should keep questioning it. It's an ex, a super expensive. Um, thing to take on because not only do we take on that initial expense, but it's an ongoing expense. But I just think no matter which way we slice it, we've got two hundred plus infants on the waitlist. And I do think that's a real number.
I don't question it from an expense, expense standpoint. I, I just, sometimes we find these bits of information that don't square in my brain. That the enrollment, it's, some it's static, so why?
Does it speak to people leaving?
I don't know. That's what I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm asking the question because I don't, I don't have a really good idea on why. And Kelly might be right, maybe the list is always just that long and maybe most of that list resides up here anyway. And that's why it, once they get into the, the county, countywide public school system, maybe you just don't see a ripple then because it's, you know. That goes in there and it just gets absorbed and it's pretty much the same number all the time. We are always looking. At the same number on these waitlists. Maybe that's what it is, but if that's the case, that would then really speak to building a center faster. If the number's always gonna be two hundred, maybe we, you know. Then, then if the number's been the same for a long time, that just says that there is, there is definitely a need. No matter what happens in the community, that's a static number. The school system's a static number. How do we, how do we? Fill that need then, right? So.
Well, I think Kelly makes a good point too. I, we've gotta see how we make some progress in the infant toddler age groups and. We know they cost more, so if we're gonna do a center that's, that's infant toddlers only, it's gonna cost us more. Of a subsidy than the others, because those age groups have higher staff ratios and, and, um. You know, they, they just cost more, so. Um, and I think it's for those same reasons, it's slower to make progress in that age group as well.
Right.
So, um, I, I think that's very valid, Kelly, is to have the group really take a hard look at how we can. Can improve that, that age group.
You know, I brought this up in, in childcare and the arguments against are the fact that you want. You want families to stay in one facility from infant through pre-K. And that you don't wanna make families with larger, you know, with multiple kids, do multiple drops, alright, well, my infant goes here and then my. Toddler goes here and then my preschooler goes here. But knowing that those are the arguments, I don't think they hold water in today's environment. In, uh, universal pre-K where, you know, you don't have the kids being able to go to these schools. Um, and also in the fact of where the needs are and the fact that the needs are in infant and toddler and that's where we need to look. And maybe we make it so that it has the flexibility of being dynamic. If over the years that, that changes where, hey, we don't have any room for pre-K, that those rooms can be adjusted if needed. And maybe funding is a little pulled out, uh, or the subsidies are pulled out in that case. But I think looking at where we are today, there is no doubt that we need to. Put ourselves in a financial position with this new center. That focuses on allowing it to operate with an infant toddler only, uh, perspective. And not being relying on pre-K to pay the bills for all the, uh, littler kids.
Well, infant and to, infant toddler pays the bills or, uh, helps subsidize the.
Other way around.
The other way around. Okay, so, uh, pre-K, the older kids subsidize for the.
You can have one teacher for twelve kids or something like that versus one per six.
Oh, for instance, cause you think it'd be like one to fifty.
They're not, they tell anybody.
Pre-K. That's old pre-K. That's old friend.
With the waitlist, um, stables getting built hopefully here soon and then Block eleven, I think we've gotta get ahead of that. I mean, I think that's gonna be super important. There's gonna be a wave that's coming here that I think is gonna hit us, so we put a.
Maybe. See, I don't, that's the really, that's part of the question. If that, if that number is, has been stable historically. As these other areas we've built mature, those kids have already aged into the school district. And they're not as vibrantly having a bunch of kids, like the Wellington, for example.
Yeah.
You know, we had a period where the Wellington was all. Like little kids and then we got an issue because of Wellington's all kids that need cars.
Yeah.
Right, so, I mean, that's, that's really what I wanna, I, I'd like to see some historical data on where, where this. Where that number's been. I mean, I think it serves a lot of purposes and I've never really thought about it that way. Because I've never seen the school district number before, so maybe, maybe these neighborhoods.
If you know the kindergarten numbers for, cause they're gonna have the most, the school district is gonna have the most.
I think there's more, um, alternatives for non-traditional school district. Education today as well.
Yeah, there are.
So the school district actually may be growing, but not showing it numbers. Because people are taking advantage of, of, uh, alternatives.
Like in homes.
Homeschool or, or whatever.
Explore that in a, in the Summit School District Finance Committee, we look at like what our enrollment number is, cause that's what our funding is. And we, we explored where some of these kids go and it, it, it isn't, it isn't homeschooling anymore. Like that is a very, very small number. Um, it, it does exactly what you said. It goes in waves and like where you see it. We see the wave coming from that K through three right now. That is peaking, even though our total enrollment is down, that we can see this wave coming and, and. And so, and we see a lot of that and we talk a lot about that. And one of the things that was greatest about what, uh, Governor Polis said was getting rid of some of these. Things that were taking funding away because it's, it's a dire situation. And, you know, having that enrollment get back up to where it was is critical for the school system right now.
It's an interesting question.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I'll just mention, cause Elizabeth mentioned it to Kelly and I, and she also mentioned it. Um, the other thing I'll just mention, because Elizabeth mentioned it to Kelly and I, and she also mentioned it during the ECO Board meeting, that they're looking at where their next childcare site will be. And there is a conversation about doing a large childcare facility at Lake Hill. It's, I, I don't know when in the timeline that is, so we should just continue to chat with them about what they might be doing and what we should do.
No, nothing for us? Is that what we're saying?
Elizabeth did say there's money for us.
She did, yes.
So.
She said like how much?
She guaranteed it.
Twelve bucks.
Twelve bucks?
She guaranteed?
Thing to think about on this childcare piece and, and it's more anecdotally from folks in my own company and friends of friends. Um, I'm seeing friends that are not fully employed because they can't figure out childcare five days a week. And so I think that capacity issue, you know, we've got housing we're spending money on. And then we're, we're hoping that that generates workforce, right? But I think it's only fractional workforce because the childcare piece isn't right there. So just as we work on this, I think that's important.
Okay, fix this for us, would you please? Thank you. Uh, committee reports, there was, uh, nothing really. You have any questions about nothing?
No.
And, uh, financials? Dave? Hello?
Dave.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Ben, how are you?
I'm still recovering from Sunday, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I'm a big Cowboys fan.
Knew that or not?
I hope they didn't.
Good game.
Skills. On two days for me, so forgive me.
Sorry, Dave.
Well, there you go. Uh, just real quick, um, just an update on our financials for twenty-two. Uh, we finished the year versus our budget, um, with all of our excise tax funding. We finished about eleven percent over our budget for twenty-two. Um, comparing that to twenty-one, we were relatively just a little bit, uh, under twelve percent over in sales tax. And then the RET was about thirty-seven percent under twenty-one levels, which is expected. But based on how we've been trending over the last few months, I feel good where we are on our budget for twenty-three. As you know, we took a ten percent, uh, reduction based upon what we were seeing and expecting going forward. Um, but if we look at just a overall view for all of the industries, um, comparing it to twenty nineteen, we're still forty percent roughly over twenty nineteen levels, which is strong. And everything's really running strong versus twenty nineteen, except for marijuana is roughly flat. And, um, so that's, that's a highlighted summary. We're still closing the books for twenty-two. Um, so next month you'll have a more detailed twenty-two view for all the funds, expenses, those types of things. And we're, uh, gonna be working on a new reporting package for you as well, expanded, uh, to kind of flavor how you approve the budget. Um, I think that's pretty much all I have for tonight. If there's any questions.
I spoke, uh, briefly with Bella, but you know, on, was it page ten of the finance report, you have the number of short-term rental licenses by year. And I was hoping that we could work with Bella to break that down to the, the sectors that we have.
Right.
Uh, and so that we know how many, if, if what we did is generally working or not, and maybe this report's only once a year, but how many in zone three did we lose? How many in the resort zone did we gain? And just so that we can kinda have a running total of that.
Right, and we are gonna have a review, uh, with Rick and Shannon before the end of the month. As we have a report due February first for the ordinance, just high level. I think we lost thirty zone threes as of today. Um, and I believe thirty zone ones as of today.
Yeah.
Um, that was on the way down to Town Hall this afternoon. So she's still working on getting things cleaned up, but that's kinda where we are right now.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Three zone two that we lost, or do we know?
Nothing really in zone two, nothing material, zone three and zone one. Yeah, under a hundred.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, amendments to policy three A density and nine dash one dash twelve, non-conformities. Hi.
Good afternoon. All right.
What you got?
We are here, last time we talked about this was last year.
I see what you did there.
Um.
It's funny.
We talked about, we removed policy four, which was mass, mass bonuses. Now we just have density under policy three. Um, so we just have some of the additional stuff we talked about. We wanted to get those going. So we're back with just some added changes. Those three changes are in your memo. It's basically two exemption, exemptions, one's adding the five hundred square foot exemption for carriage houses at Lincoln. Um, Lincoln Park in Wellington, we already have it for, um, the bonus rooms for deed restricted units. So just to treat those kind of the same way. Um, and other exemptions for garages and or sheds in the historic district. Um, staff kind of recommends the, we looked at it and we recommend five hundred square feet. It's kind of a two-car garage, similar size to the Wellington, Lincoln Park garages. Um, and then the third item was clarifying language for non-conformities. Right now in both sections, in the density section, as well as the non-conformity section, which is in a different part of the code. It says, um, if something's destroyed less than fifty percent, it may be rebuilt. Um, we just wanna strengthen that by your direction to shall be permitted to be rebuilt to the same size. Um, so those, sorry, that's kinda quick, um, but we're here for any questions if you have.
What we asked for.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Questions?
Who look up there?
I don't know. We good with this going to ordinance?
Yeah.
Everybody good? All right, thank you. Excellent job.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, dark sky. Rossi here? You gonna bring him in? Yeah, oh, excellent.
Because the county wants to.
Rossi brought this originally when he was on council.
Yeah, he, he looked better in dim lighting.
Julia.
Thank you. So we had a couple of questions from council members about, um, dark sky community certification, which is through. Sure. Better? All right, um, dark sky certificate, community certification, which is through the International Dark Sky Association, um, which is an international, um, group that kind of monitors and gives recommendations on dark skies and education. And it really comes down to three things if you're gonna be certified. One is kinda your municipal lighting code, um, meeting certain standards elevated beyond, um, most other areas. And then you've got community education, which is continual. You have to do a certain amount of education every year to maintain your certification status if you receive that. And then the third is your public lighting infrastructure as well. So those three legs to the stool for certification. Background is, um, you know, there's a lot of benefits to good lighting design. And I won't go into all of those, but kinda spans from human health and safety to, um, animals, uh, migration patterns, for example. And, you know, really has to do with heritage as well, just passing on that night sky to, you know, the next generation. Um, it also has become a tourism draw. And so that is actually, I'll talk about that in a moment with the state. But, um, I put some links at the end of the memo that kinda go into more of the benefits. So, um, hopefully you had a chance to look at one or two of those. Um, back in two thousand and seven, we did, as Eric was just mentioning, go through a really extensive lighting code. And, and I think that the Breckenridge lighting code at the time, back then, was one of the most stringent in the country. Um, in fact, after we drafted it, I did speak with the International Dark Sky Association when they were writing their model lighting ordinance. So, um, I think we still have a great lighting code. We've done modifications since the adoption. We have the most important features, I think, to keep dark skies, which is, um, downcast light fixtures. We have height requirements or limitations. Um, we have temperature limitations as well, which, um, really come, kinda comes to the safety piece as well. And then we've got, um, a conformance deadline for non-conforming fixtures that were put in place prior to two thousand and seven. So we have seen a lot of development since two thousand and seven in the fifteen years since we put this in place. And, you know, our skies are pretty dark, you know, maybe not on a cloudy day. But, um, you look over town and, and you can see dark skies. Um, you look down the, uh, down the valley toward Denver and you can see a glow sometimes, especially if it's cloudy. Um, so really kinda just maintaining that dark sky that we have. I put that heat map in there, um, because I thought that was really interesting. You can see how red, um, Denver is as far as light pollution and how it radiates out. Um, we do have a little break, um, a little break in between the, um, light pollution and, and before it gets to Summit County. Um, we do have obviously some work to do that we could be doing, but we're not in a bad space. When I pull up the heat map for, um, other areas that are actually certified, um, which include like Flagstaff and Sedona and Ketchum, we're, this looks pretty similar to them. So we're really not that far off. I think we're doing a really good job. But there's more things we can do with, you know, if we wanna become certified. And there's been technical, uh, technological advancements in lighting as well, um, that we could still do. The state of Colorado is interested in, um, having more dark sky community, certified communities and has passed a little bit of legislation to kinda help particularly smaller communities get some help to, to achieve that. Um, and they've really filtered that down through their tourism office. And then that has gotten to the BTO and they, you know, I've had some conversations with Lucy about it as well and some interest there. Um, to becoming dark sky certified. Um, we've mentioned it in the Sustainable Breck Plan, um, that we just adopted in two thousand and twenty-two as well. Um, and, you know, it's, it is a type of pollution that you can actually fix right away. It's like one of the only ones. Um, you, you know, you can't fix a river very quickly, but you can certainly fix lighting immediately. So, um, we can make strides on this, I think, if, um, the council so desires. So with the certification, there would be code requirements that would come with it. Um, some on the private end, but there's really not that many that I've seen so far. Um, going through everything that we would have to implement on the private end. Um, then our, it's mainly our public lights. So we do have some non-conforming lights out there in the historic district and elsewhere that we would have to, um, come into conformance with some kind of administrative rules or something. We probably wouldn't put it in the development code, but, um, we would need to do something like that. And there's some other pieces that go along with that that I'll get into in a second. But then we'd also have to do education, um, ongoing. The main thing with the public lighting is that there'd be a five-year amortization program, uh, period. So, uh, we go through this certification process. That can be a fairly lengthy process. I hear like even up to three years. Um, and so we'd have to have that five-year plan once we hit the certification. So that would be the big cost to the town. Um, I did put in here, um, that that would be the big financial cost. We do have some lighting on buildings that probably need to come into conformance. But realistically, we would probably go ahead and do that also with the two thousand and twenty-five conformance date that private property has to do already, that's in our code. Um, but the streetlights, that could get expensive, um, depending on how many we need to do. Staff has not conducted an analysis on that. Um, however, should we do that, there's a couple of benefits. Um, one is putting in smart city infrastructure into those poles. And I mentioned some of these. I know that we've just some watering for the hanging baskets. We've got, you know, upcoming autonomous vehicles potentially that you can put sensors in. Um, and you can, you need to be able to dim these lights as well to meet the certification. Um, another benefit is that with those smart controls, you could set those lights to come on, you know, later in the summer. Um, and both of those things would be saving energy. Um, and then the Department of Energy has like an estimate of thirty-five percent energy savings, which of course is gonna result in, um, a reduction in carbon emissions as well. So, um, and that's just based on kinda waste of energy, you know, so. On the private side, there's not gonna be a whole lot of financial implications because we already have a requirement for everybody to do their lights, uh, their lighting change out by two thousand and twenty-five. And there's gonna be some, there'd be some code requirements, but a lot of that's gonna hit the, um, larger developments such as like lumens per acre, um, and a den, energy density cap. So that's gonna actually reduce the, the electricity used on those properties. But also, um, they're already gonna be hiring a lighting designer because we require photometrics for a large property. Um, I think that this, if we went to the certification level, it would require it on all properties, which means single family as well. But there is a calculation that, um, like a homeowner or architect could do to calculate the lumens per acre that are proposed and staff I'm sure could help out with that if there was any questions. Um, so those are, we've got three questions on here. And, um, one is, do you wanna have certification? And we can go through like an analysis of how much that would cost as far as converting our public infrastructure to this. Um, if not, or even in the meantime, if you do wanna pursue that, we could go ahead and make immediate code changes. Um, and then that's mainly gonna be that private side. And then we could go ahead and the third thing would be the administrative guidelines for just best practices of town lighting. Um, so that would be things like where would you place lights under, how would you make decisions of where to put lights? What kinda lights would you use? Um, but it wouldn't kinda kick in the five-year conversion unless we wanted to go for the certification.
Questions first?
What would it all this do to our, uh, holiday lighting? The trees along the river walk with the, the white lights?
Yeah, I, I mean, it does, there is some code requirements for decorative lighting, flagpole lighting, um, and street lighting. So I'm not, I don't know, I'm gonna guess that they can't be quite as white.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in our code, we actually encourage soft lighting, our warm white lighting. And I think that we probably have it.
Please, that we put up there for the lighting of Breckenridge. Is there, is there any way, would we have to replace all the, the actual bulbs themselves? Or is there any way we can have less power to make them a little bit dimmer to comply?
I, you know, I haven't looked into that, Jeffrey, um, but I believe the bulb would have to be replaced because.
Replace all the whole strings and stuff.
I think, I'm gonna guess that the temperature of that bulb is too high.
Right. And how would, um, how would restaurant, uh, bistro lighting surrounding restaurants, how does that fit in?
Um, I did not see anything on the bistro lights. I mean, we do have regulations already on where you could do that. Um, and then we have the down, that there need to be downcasts, so any new ones, of course. So this would just apply to going forward, except when we hit that two thousand and twenty-five date, then everybody's gonna need to come light anyways.
For penny and for pound.
Yeah. I have sa- similar concerns to Jeffries in the commercial zone. I, that's gonna be costly, um, for a lot of the small business.
Mm-hmm.
To upgrade a lot of that decorative lighting.
So that's in the current code that you're.
Though I know, but the existing, the grandfathered stuff.
Doesn't, wait, I'm confused. Doesn't everyone have to comply?
Doesn't, wait, I'm confused. Doesn't everyone have to comply by twenty twenty-five?
Yes, that's what the current code says. Correct. So if there's concern there, then
Yeah, I mean, I just think it brings such vibrancy to the commercial core. And um, to to change, change it all out, the kind, I'm fully supportive outside of commercial core. The commercial core, I'm a little concerned about.
And Dick, your concerns are the holiday lights and bistro lights?
Oh, yeah, um, just because I think it brings a lot of vibrancy to the and I think a lot of people, when they start looking at the shielded bistro lighting, they're just going to eliminate it. Just due to cost. And um, you know, I that's concerning.
But aren't the biggest for lack of a better phrase culprit, isn't the biggest culprit the town with those trees with all the, the white lights on them?
I mean, I think that would probably, I don't, I don't have a exact answer for you on that.
I mean, anecdotally, it seems like and twenty
We don't own those lights. We contract to have those hung, so we could probably add to the contract a different lighting. And I would like to understand.
I mean, that's really it's really become part of our brand is that I mean, the amount of people that are in the Blue River Plaza all the time taking pictures. But if we had a, if we had a light that wasn't white, that was more subtle, like that would still be pretty.
A warmer temperature, like a soft white color, for example, but um, yeah, there's it's still allowed to have the decorative lighting. It's just, there's, there would be some limitations to it.
Do you think you could bring us a little bit more information on both the holiday lighting and the bistro lighting? And really paying attention to like, is there a significant additional cost? Because I mean, part of what that does is it draws people into the area, so I mean, you know, the business people might just make that conversion because they still want to draw people in, so.
Well, yeah, and we talked about a lot of that being directional. Um, it, you know, to get people to walk on the riverwalk and I mean, when you look at Fort Collins and the success they've had and really, they've, they've made their alleys vibrant. And a lot of bistro lighting is, has been used and they're probably not very dark sky either, but yeah, I, I mean, it's certainly worth looking at and analyzing.
So is everybody good with doing an analysis of the town's exterior lighting status? To see if, to see what we would have to do to become dark sky community certification?
Only concern is maybe not a concern at all, but um, is with these streetlights. And if we need to shield those or replace them so that they're shielded more, does that provide less incentive or does that decrease the motivation for guests to walk? Or visitors to be able to walk through these areas of the streetlights or I guess the worst case scenario, potentially make those areas less safe for people, or am I reading this wrong?
So you know, the, the, so that we kept the Wellsbach, the traditional, that's called Wellsbach fixture. We kept the traditional Wellsbach in the core. But then as you go up to the neighborhoods, those are the new modified Wellsbach. So we already have there's like a delineation line. I don't, I don't know if anybody could, I don't know if anybody notices. Like going up Wellington, those are all the downcast Wellsbach. It's the same fixture.
The light bulb in it is insane.
Yeah, so we should next time we drive around, just have a look at that. I think it's sort of when you get to the top of the hill going up Wellington, like right around Royal Tiger is where the switch is. It goes from corner to corner.
And those would be acceptable under this program.
Yeah, because we adopted those with the whole dark sky thing originally, right? So there's probably still
Should be, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not sure what lighting lumens they have, but
They look pretty different.
They do.
That we reviewed those originally, as long as they're
The reason we didn't want to go with that for the core was the, when it snows, that the uplighting, which is the anti-dark sky thing, but it's part of the allure was that, that look, that glow to the, to the core.
Can you bring back a little bit of information about this, whether all the new lights that we just put in would need to be retrofitted? And then also, I kind of am curious if what we're trying to do in order to be compliant would actually make the skies darker? Because if we have to switch all the light bulbs to the LEDs that are like on Wellington or on the re- on four o'clock going up to the ski area, then I think we're going to be brighter than. I mean, I just like an analysis like of are we really doing what we're trying to do here? Because like in the core of town, the lights are very warm and they're pretty dim. And it's very, you know, it's like quaint little town. But as you walk up Wellington, I mean, it's a lot brighter. The, so I just, I'm curious. I don't want to lose that like warm lighting.
We can look at the bulbs. Yeah, well, we can look at the bulbs on the Newport fixtures that are the new ones and then Wellsbach and, or something alternative. It might be similar to the New- Newport and just go with a warmer light. Um, and I think that uh, Public Works' preference would be to actually change the whole pole, like everything out.
Why?
They hate them.
They spend a lot of time, they spend a lot of time fixing those things. They're not Old ones.
You could put a lot of that infrastructure inside the poles too.
Along those lines, would we have to relook at our small cell ordinance and guidance? Would we have to update that?
I don't, well, that also has to do with height. I mean, but one day could they be in a shorter pole? Potentially, yeah.
James?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, I think as Julie mentioned, some of the interest to change the poles would be to get game or height. Particularly down on Main Street, those poles are predominantly nine feet. And they have a lot of stuff hanging on, as we know, signs and flowers and stuff. So it'd be nice to get the extra height and kind of make, bring some consistency to that corridor.
What height would you go to?
There's some twelve-foot poles out there now on some of the, on some of the intersections that you see on Cardinal corners of those intersections, the main ones like Washington Main and Wellington Main, I believe. You can, once you kind of get your search pattern formed, you can notice it. And same with the lights, the Newport lights, you, you can notice that too. And then in terms of you know, on the periphery of town, the spacing gets different than downtown. So you, we're kind of, it's a fine line of safety and, you know, the light might be a little bit colder or brighter, but it's also functional walking in some of those peripheral areas and having safety, whereas downtown, you know, the proximity of those are much closer. And so that, that warmer ambiance is kind of met through that. So there's kind of some
So do you think we could maintain that warmer ambiance? If we were switching out of the bulbs to the new LEDs, or have we already been doing that and we haven't even noticed?
You know, a lot of the conversation to, to this point has been to make those areas safer to walk, for instance, Ski Hill. You know, we have a lot of people that walk and ride particularly in the winter and that's, it's generally when we feel a lot of calls of it's really dark out here. Can you make the, make it safer to walk? And that's part of our, obviously our sustainability goals is to provide walking, so. It's, again, it's kind of a fine line of, of trying to strike, you know, find that, that, the middle ground of that, but
And James, those new LEDs are like, a lot of the fixtures, we said, I see is that the, you don't change out the bulb, it's the fixture. If you want to change out the bulb, you have to change the fixture. Is that some of the, the new ones that we have, or is there an actual LED bulb that you can replace?
No, they're, they're, they're really not as replaceable. Yeah, they're kind of a disc that's all integrated.
Part of the fixture.
That's part of the fixture. And that disc that goes into that Newport light can actually be, is what needs to be replaced, but you know, since we've gone to that, that um, style, I don't know that we've really had to replace them other than when they've been hit.
It's, it seems like there's, there's two issues. The, you know, like as you venture Seabiscuit Road or up on Wellington or Four O'Clock Road with people where it's a matter of public safety, then they might, you know, like or need a little bit brighter light. You know, that's a public safety, but then downtown, it's more like ambiance and, you know, and I mean, so I think if, if we, we could err on the side of caution for ambiance, because, you know, it, it work with it, whereas, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to um, make it more onerous for people to, you know, say, walk up Wellington, walk up Ski Hill Road, because they're trying to encourage them to walk. So is there, is there a solution? Is there a happy medium on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know if I have the answer right now, but I'm, I'm certain that we could, you know, if we did change the lights out downtown in the historic district that have the old style of the Wellsbach, you know, that's the, the lights that are, you know, the tops are all lit up and that's kind of, you know, kind of the anti uh, dark sky, so to speak.
She has bad.
If we were to change those out, we would, you know, we'd put the new Newport style head in, which looks very similar from afar, but you can tell, you know, closely. And we could, you know, we could do a um, a warmer Kelvin that would provide that, you know, that more ambiance versus the
Putting the cart in front of the horse a little bit. Do we have a, like, a C and D program that if we replaced a bunch of these poles, like where they're not just going into our landfill that we're trying to protect, like, what, what happens to those? And like, where, where do we do with those?
You know, I don't know if I know the answer to that right now. We haven't really explored that.
I, I can see that question coming up going.
Yeah, we had, and Eric probably remembers and others do, we had these goose neck style poles up Ski Hill and uh, we changed all those out to the current style, to the Newport and Wellsbach, and we ended up selling those off and I, I see them around every once in a while. There's some down in the winery down in Georgetown.
So why don't we have, why don't we have the staff do the analysis and really just get some finer point? I mean, I, I think, I think we're probably premature doing any administrative guidelines or code changes until we get an idea. And really, I think the, the larger question is sort of what Kelly was asking. Outside of the dark sky certification, is it going to do anything? I don't want to just chase this certification. If it's going to make the situation worse or different or costly or more dangerous or, I don't know, we sort of have a, a brand too, so, but I, I don't think we know enough to make any concrete decisions, so. But I see, think from head nods that we'd like to at least look into it a little more.
Okay. I take a look at the videos too, because it does kind of address safety, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dave Rossi thanks you.
Yeah, shout out to Rossi.
He's the one that brought it, really browbeat it. It scares me. TDR price methodology. Yeah, Truck, he's a hero. All right, Eric, I know this is one that uh, you've been anxious to take a look at. So we um, we did um, do some analysis of the TDR price. It's right now, we've changed the methodology on this several times in the last twenty-plus years. Most recently, it was changed for the better, because it was, the, the methodology before was even worse. It was based on vacant land sales in the back country. Assessor's data that was four years old, it, it was, um, so anyway, um, we went back to basing it on sales of backcountry land over and since two thousand, when the TDR program was formed. So um, that number is the ninety-eight thousand or ninety-nine thousand, excuse me, that's in the table that I included in the memo. But one of the issues with that obviously is that um, it doesn't really reflect what we're paying right now for backcountry land. If we're going out to buy it now, it's way more expensive than it was back in year two thousand and we're using a median of all those sales and like ninety-some transactions. So um, what I had suggested and proposed with the county is that we take a look at the last seven years of sales data, which gets us to a much uh, much higher per acre cost around eleven thousand eight hundred, if I believe. And that gets us to about uh, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars per TDR, because we base it on twenty acres of backcountry land. So that's the proposal right now. The county is agreeable to moving forward with that. They have asked me about, does it make more sense to base it on a more even number, like the last five years or the last ten years? The problem with that is if you go back ten years, real estate values have changed so much in the last ten years. We could go back to five years and I, I think that'd probably work from the town's perspective. There's less data points than in terms of, you do want to have more than just a handful of sales to base your numbers on. We've got like thirteen sales since two thousand um, two thousand sixteen, if we use the seven years. So that's essentially why we've gone that route. But anyway, that's still something that um, may come up in the county's discussions. So they're planning to go to the BOCC on February seventh to discuss this. But they will be uh, showing the proposal as we've come up with it here. But anyway, that's a high level on this and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions or take any feedback you have. Questions? How's everybody feel about this?
Great work. Be opposed to a ten-year look back. I, you know, if they want to go five, I'm all right with that. But I agree with you, Mark. I think seven, you know, would you say eighteen properties?
Uh, thirteen, yeah.
Thirteen? Yeah, I would. I mean, you go much less than that, and that's not enough, but ten years is too long. Mark has changed too much.
I think two thirty-seven is a bargain.
Yeah, this is long overdue and I like the direction it's going. Interestingly enough, if you look at buying dirt in the upper blue, that two thirty-seven would get you in the door for a single family, you know, might be up near Hoosier Pass, but the number's in the right direction. And certainly for, in the core, Jeffrey, you're not wrong at all. That number's way higher for right downtown, so.
Well, and that's where they're transferring the destiny is to the core.
Well, and that's, you know, maybe part of the broader discussion is is two thirty-seven too low, but I, it's, it's a move in the right direction and I'm happy at two thirty-seven.
But you know what? If this was something that we could just do on our own, we, we would make it considerably higher, but we have a partner that's you know, we've been trying to do this for quite some time, so.
Yeah, and the one thing, maybe just a little bit of defense to them, they also have a countywide TDR program. And so although they have used a little different, they tried to have a similar type of formula. And so this does kind of affect how they look at the rest of the county. But they may just also have to go with a different methodology here.
Or different parts of the county. I, I think they should just do that, so.
Uh, everybody good with this?
Curiosity and not that I'm I just was wondering the history. Why is it the price of the sending area and not the cost from the receiving area?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Great question, Jay.
So uh, uh, because we set up a TDR bank. And the whole idea was the bank, which the county helps administer for us. The bank is a known place that like a developer downtown wants to, you know, get some TDRs. They, they can just go to that um, bank and they pay one price for it. If you base it on the value downtown, it changes no matter what location you are in. So it's hard to, you really can't have a bank at that point to really serve that purpose. There are a couple of programs I looked at. We did research in, around the country that base it on individual sites in the receiving locations. But then it kind of has to be site-specific. Each, each value is different. So what we came to the conclusion was, is that what we need to, end of the day, the money that we receive. It's split between the county and the town, we go buy buy more backcountry with it. And so really, end of the day, from our perspective, it's what do we have to pay to buy backcountry with that money, so.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Just curious, how many of these do we sell in a year? Is it a couple, is it ten?
It it really varies, um, some years it'll be one or two, other years it's been fifteen, twenty. So I think there's been, I believe, last I saw something like seventy different TDR transactions. So it's really far surpassed anyone's expectations when we put this in place twenty years ago. And it's, you know, it's over two thousand acres of land we've been able to preserve through the program, so. All right, Mark, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mark. Okay, we have uh liquor marijuana and tobacco licensing authority interviews. Hi.
Hi.
Who are you?
Good, how are you?
This is a rare treat to have you in front of us.
Enjoy. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As liquor marijuana licensing authority members tear in power, uh resigned from the authority effective January eighteenth. Uh, she was near the end of her first term, which would end December twenty twenty three. So we need to appoint someone to fill eleven months of this term before they could re-up for a full term. The volunteer authority position was advertised and we received two letters of interest from Haley Littleton and Sean Fitzsimmons. Copies of the letters are in your packets and they are both present um for interviews. That's all I got for you.
Okay, uh, so um, if you can decide who's gonna interview and the other person can go stand in the hall for a moment while we do that.
Let's start with Haley because hers was done first.
Great.
And then Sean, um Helen is going to hang out out there and we'll start without.
Perfect.
And then I'll just be here for the other questions.
Hi, stranger.
I know, long time no see.
Yeah. Um, oh, well, thank you for applying. We're gonna ask you a couple of questions.
Okay, great.
If you would like to uh, just give us a brief background, just quick, so we know who you are and we already do, but you know, do it anyway.
There are a few people sitting up here who don't know who I am, so um, hi Haley Littleton. I live at one oh seven North Harris Street, Breckenridge, um, which is great. And yeah, so I uh recently moved back up here, was in Denver for a year after I left the town. And you know, I think we often boomerang back, so happy to be here. I needed to, you know, leave to see how good it was. Um, and yeah, so as many of you know, I worked for the town for four and a half years uh in the communications role. And then um, after that switched for a year to NGO work. And then now I'm working for Western Resource Advocates, which is a Western Environmental Policy Organization.
Awesome, uh, questions?
And I'm assuming we'll ask both again, it's the same questions. Tell me what background and experience you have in the area of of alcohol, liquor and uh. Other other than consumption of of uh alcohol and marijuana.
Yeah, so what I I guess I didn't include in the initial part is that um, as many Summit Countyans do. I've worked in restaurants and coffee shops and bars for probably six years. Um, while uh, you know, working my way into being able to live here. So um, have been a bartender for several years, uh, worked in a couple of restaurants as a server and bartender. Worked um, at coffee shops with liquor license as well, have taken uh, you know, the liquor courses. And that you're required to take and then also I think in terms of um, the marijuana end, I think working for the town was great. You know, I worked directly for the clerks um, department. So saw all of kind of the marijuana and liquor liquor processing, the ordinances, all that, the background needed. Um, I think also uh, that experience, I really understand council's position on uh special event permits and licensing. And um, how council kind of wants liquor in the town of Breck to be handled as well as marijuana, you know, know all the background of. Um, the process of marijuana licensing in the town. So I think that having that background um, along with the experience in restaurants would make me, you know, be able to hit the ground running.
Do you have any, can you perceive any conflicts that you might have relationships with uh either industry that could conflict you?
No, no.
Haley, why do you want to serve on the licensing authority?
Yeah, I think that I alluded to this in my letter, but um, I miss you guys, can't stay away. Um, and just feel really strongly about now being um, living within the town limits, being able to serve. And being able to contribute my time and uh maybe have a different perspective, demographic on the board than is usually seen. And um, yeah, with my experience in restaurants and all of that stuff, I'm also really interested as well.
Anything else? Anything the licensing authority can do better?
I think that um, yeah, I think what I said talked about earlier in terms of like special use and permitting and events. Um, I think that is a big conversation that the town has had and will continue to have. And so I think keeping a pulse on that in terms of the character in the community that we want to have versus tradition and and how we move forward with that. So I think that's something that I would pay attention to.
Cool, thanks. Haley, thank you, it's great to see you again and uh, yeah. If you can just step out in the hall while we interview Sean. Uh, remember your questions, or like.
I wrote mine down.
Oh, good, okay. You don't have to do anything, that's, yeah. Hello, good, how are you? Welcome, thanks for applying.
Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you.
Important that people like you apply to these things. Why don't you just give us a quick uh, background, um, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Sure, yeah, so uh, my name's Sean Fitzsimmons. Um, my professional world is I'm a director of application innovation at Microsoft. Um, so I've been in the IT world for about twenty five years, but been messing with computers since I was a kid. Uh, but my hobby for a long time, because my wife and I, our favorite thing to do is go out and try new restaurants and. Bars and food and alcohol and all that sort of stuff, um, has been a lot of things with the culinary world. Um, so um, both here as well as previously when I lived in Texas, um, I help uh, run a pretty big food group on Facebook here. Um, I was able to help uh, work with Elizabeth Lawrence and a lot of the restaurant owners to help them get reopened during COVID when the five star program was launched. Um, it's just a huge passion of mine, um, use that group for charity type stuff. Uh, for various charities in the county, Summit Lost Pet Rescue, um, and FERC being the the two biggest that we donate to. Uh, my wife and I personally, as well as uh, just raising money through the group. Um, so it's just a big passion area of mine of just helping uh, helping restaurants, you know, get off the ground, be successful, remain successful. Um, I've helped several several restaurants kind of launch their beverage program aimed at, you know, increasing sales, being safe about it and all of that sort of stuff. So it's really just, you know, a a big passion spot for me.
Yeah, good work. Yeah, hey Sean, um, thanks for, thanks for applying. Tell me, um, outside of consumption, um, do you have any experience, uh, or tell me about your experience with um, alcohol and and marijuana?
Um, you know, not on the regulation side, um, I uh, you know, like I said, I've helped a bunch of restaurants launch their beverage program. Um, just because I have a ton of insight into the wine world and spirits world and stuff like that, um, but not on the regulation side of things for either of them.
When it comes to, you know, all the work you've done, by the way, thank you for helping the uh, the food service industry here after COVID, kind of getting their leg up after that devastation, but.
My pleasure.
In your, in your dealings with that, is there any, do you have any perceived conflicts that uh, uh, with the with the group that you might make it hard to be objective?
No, I don't, I don't, no, no.
Sean, why do you want to serve on the licensing authority?
You know, I've I've always been a believer in just giving back and participating in the communities that I live in, so that's kind of the big driving force. Um, but being able to match, you know, that desire up with, you know, kind of my hobby of just loving everything culinary and in spirits. Um, you know, I've said for years and years, nothing brings people together like good food and good drinks. Um, and you know, to be able to help participate in that sort of world and Breckenwood, Breck would be kind of a a dream come true for me.
Hey Sean, thanks for uh, sitting with us, um, is there anything you think the licensing licensing authority can do better?
That's a good question, I don't know, you know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if I have an answer for that.
Yeah, thanks. All right, well, thank you for applying.
Yeah, thank you for.
Discuss this at the night meeting and then uh, Karen will give you a call.
Yeah, I I echo Jeffrey's point, that five star program was huge, thank you for your participation in that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the service industry is is such a key part of the heart of, you know, this town and the county. Um, and bringing visitors in and, you know, it's such a dual role of making the locals feel welcome and like we have places to hang out. And the tourists a place to come, you know, have an awesome experience so they come back and, you know, anything my wife and I could have done to help uh, that world, we would have done, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Uh, okay, do you guys want to take a few minutes to get uh, through the reports? Since we're done, unless you have something else to ask at boss, new boss, real boss.
She hasn't missed a step, I tell you. And the king is dead, lawling the king, right?
Uh, so report of town manager and staff, he's, is he listening in?
If he's not, he probably is.
Yeah, I hope he is.
Be my guest.
Let's be realistic, Shannon.
Uh, report of you and staff, anything?
So just a couple of things I will mention, um. Rick wanted me to let you know that he just entered into a lease with uh Bach Financial for the professional building. It's a year with a two year. Two one year renewals, um, and so by code, he can enter into that agreement, but we are required to let you know, so he wanted to make sure you knew that. Uh, Tetra Tech is going to be moving out of that building and he does have some prospective tenants that may be moving in. Um, and I think that's it for now.
Managing that building now?
Um, Jason Swinger, I think, does the.
Same person?
Yep, yep.
Got it?
And he's kept the occupancy pretty high in there?
I think we're doing all right on occupancy, yeah, I think he's done a pretty good job, Rick's been pretty happy.
Um, do it right now. Hey, um, when uh, with uh, with ALO, when are we going to like expand, maybe like in the Cox Corkscrew? Or um, uh, the, what's your neighborhood, what's that called?
Highlands?
No, no, yeah, or even the even the Highlands, I'm sure they probably have their own satellite. Um, but uh, when uh, when it like the Corkscrew particular, I had a couple of people ask about that.
Um, that is not on our plan right now, certainly if we knew we had a significant number of people on that street that wanted the service. We could look at what it would cost to deploy it in that area and get those folks signed up.
So what the, what I should tell them is them to kind of get a kind of a ad hoc group together to see how many people are interested and then contact you.
And contact me or Kristen Brownson and then we, as we propose projects to you with the funding that we have. Then you all can decide, you know, we are still looking at grant money to get up Ski Hill Road. Because there is some dole of funding to get to anchor institutions, which is what we use this past two years to get down to Alta Verde. So we're really looking at ways that we can leverage grant funds in order to do different builds. And so there's, there wouldn't be grant funds, say, for that particular area, so that would have to come out of the town pocket. Um, and I will just let you know, Kristen told us um, yesterday that we have fourteen people in Tassel's Loop that are interested. And we should be able to hook them up like now, we have already have the fiber to their their place. Um, and then Blue Fifty Two, we also have some some interest there. So we've set up the build from this year in such a way that there's the ability to connect some customers over the winter.
And another question I have unrelated is um, uh, do we have, do we still have or do have we removed some of the curbside pickup signs? Around the town that we used to have, like I I think there's one like John Pietro's and I don't know where the other was, I know that. But I I just, the only one I see is on on Ridge Street, um, do we still have them?
I believe they're still up, I don't know if we took any down.
We did remove it, okay, all right.
They're all still up.
Yeah, we might look at that, that's a good point, Jeffrey, because, you know, I've got one in front of the horse and we don't do much takeout. Yeah, I mean, I don't know anybody in that area that really does.
I know, but we use that one, I mean, people use it for other, there's only, you know, one or maybe two, yeah.
We're just, Kelly just parked here to go to the horse.
But yeah, I would, I would like to, hopefully we keep that those sign, that that sign program robust. Because I think, I think there is a, um, I think it's good for the businesses, so.
All right, uh, let's do our reports, uh, Cast MMC, um, no, MMC is next week. Uh, Chan and I are gonna go to Cast on Stee boat, in Stee boat on Thursday. We originally weren't gonna go, but what's going on um, at the state level with um, the governor's housing. The state of the state was outstanding and you didn't go and you didn't go, but it was really, it was cool. But you know, we're really caught right now in a sort of a push and pull. Um, the governor really wants this housing program. I don't think we disagree that there is a need for housing, it's just the execution and where it's gonna go from here. And I have now had two meetings with his staff, plus the live meeting with his staff when we were there. I spoke with several of them, including, we spoke with the governor about it. Um, and Shannon and I both feel that we need to go to talk to Cast about this. Because there are a number of the Cast towns that are in the same boat. We've provided a ton of housing with a lot of money from our own communities to meet this need. And some of what has been proposed will potentially damage what we've been doing. And I think we're concerned enough that we've decided that we're gonna drive over for the day to have the discussion. Um, as you know, we wrote a letter to the governor that turns out ended up online or something, I don't know, and I'm, now I'm a bad guy. Yeah, I'm a bad guy, so.
I know, I, we don't know how the letter got out, um, it did go to Cast, so someone released it. Unfortunately, the reporter took, there was a line in there, um, you know, the. There are things that we need and things that we don't need. And so he basically kind of took that piece and and pushed that out there sort of out of context. Um, so you know, obviously, we want to work with the governor's office and we do appreciate, you know, what they're trying to do for affordable housing, workforce housing. Um, so Brooke sent a response and offered to talk to the reporter about the position of the town and maybe get a quote from a council member or something. So we'll see how he responds back.
I just hope it's not because of those classified documents I have at Vista Point that that we found, it could have been a nightmare.
But Eric, I think that's great, I think that some of the feedback we heard with the governor's office that we are trying to work with is just how compelling, Eric, you were in your points. And some of the other communities weren't maybe being as constructive with their feedback, so giving those, um, helping those other communities.
Some of our Cast communities don't really know about this either, I've talked to a few mayors that are not looped in at the moment, which. You know, there's also a problem at the at the higher level with CML, CML is really, I don't know if they're not engaging or the. Governor's office isn't engaging them, but there seems to be some serious friction. CML is, I I believe, really opposed to this, so I.
I read an article that they were.
Yeah, so you know, I, look, there's a huge housing problem, we all know it. We need to make sure that as this legislation gets drafted, that. We can allow them to use the the knowledge that we've gleaned over all of these years of doing this. Things about like deed restrictions and parking requirements, it just, I mean, everything we have battled for so long, it's important that. You know, it's not just housing for housing sake, there's, there has to be guardrails on this thing that make sure you get to the finish line that we were trying to and not just build housing and that's it, so. Yeah, and uh, Caroline, I met with uh, Speaker McCluskey. I called Dylan Roberts this morning, I'm gonna have a meeting with him too, since as this legislation progresses, um, we want to make sure we stay. In a position where we can discuss what we feel is important, so. That is that, uh, open space.
We had a meeting last night, um, and we did a a deep dive into the Trails work plan.
We had a meeting last night and we did a deep dive into the Trails work plan and signage work plan. Truckee facilitated it and it, it functioned really well. I think we did some good work and now we're trying to figure out how to proceed from there, whether we're going to do a, you know, kind of have a BOSAC type commission go through it with staff or a, or a kind of an ad hoc committee, what's it called? You know, kind of a subcommittee. So we're looking at that, talked a little bit about the work, about the sign plan and got a lot of good ideas. Truckee, Truckee killed it. He did, he did a really good job. And I will, I will say, this is, I think, the most functional BOSAC and staff that we've had in this department for quite some time. And not that the others were bad, but they've worked really well together and it's kind of a diverse skillset that brings a lot to the table.
Well done.
Yeah, and we had beef, two types.
Wow.
Jerk chicken and some other stuff that I don't know, but I ate. So it was good. Yeah, it was good.
Jeffrey, do you want to talk at all about the letter for the, from Open Space and Trails on Five Chair?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, it's kind of handy to have Paul Summer in there from the Forest Service. As you know, they're building this, this new chair. And, you know, our big concern is in everything that's done at the ski area is runoff. And so we were drafting a letter, or we have drafted a letter. And we're going to bring it before council and I, I kind of thought that maybe Kelly would have some ideas on it. And the big thing is how we're going to mitigate the drainage from the construction, from the construction process. You know, hopefully, maybe, maybe not all through that 60-inch pipe. And you mentioned one thing that perhaps sometimes on, on projects like that, they initially during the construction phase, they can bypass the sediment to kind of root it to a place that's would be less, less a degradation to the, to the gulch. Did I cover that right, Scott?
So I think the only thing, unless Scott has more to add, is given the deadline for comment, we weren't planning on sharing it. But we can certainly do that if you guys want to provide feedback, but I think we need to get it signed.
The letter.
The letter itself, yeah.
I'd just like to have Kelly look at it like Jeffrey did. I mean, she's the expert up here on this stuff, so.
We will do that. Scott, was there anything else? Okay.
Awesome. Good job, Jeffrey.
Yeah, thanks. I only had to have Shannon bail me out once and Scott once, so yeah. I think I'm really making great strides.
You really are. Here at the end of your 16 years, it'll all come into fruition, man. Tourism.
I mean, this week.
History.
We had a meeting last week. We had Adam with the US Forest Service come and present really about Camp Hale and the Continental Divide National Monument. What it means for potential partnership opportunities with Breck history. But also, they are looking at redoing the White River National Forest Land and Resource Management Plan, which is a pretty big deal. They haven't done it in 20 some years. So this first year, they're just meeting initially with groups. I think there could be great opportunities for Open Space to talk with the group and then next year and for the following few years, it'll be a, a pretty long process to redo that plan. Otherwise, Milne Park and the Jesse Mill project are, are moving forward.
Sweet. All right. Creative arts, meeting on Friday. Childcare. Nope, events, sorry. Events?
We already reported for this month.
All right, childcare. Workforce housing. Anything to add, gentlemen? Social equity.
We met with Ann from Open Space to talk about the Quandary McCullough Gulch access and the commission threw out some ideas to try and make it more equitable. One of the main themes was just in general, information, knowledge, education to some of those groups accessing our outdoor spaces should be a priority continually. Also, we talked about creating a Black History Month video, which will be based on Barney Ford's letter to the editor. He wrote to his owner as a freedman. And another video, another video on really what he did for the state of Colorado to petition equal rights. So that'll be coming out in the next month or so.
Cool.
That's awesome. That's a great letter.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned until seven o'clock.
All right. Gotta plug in.
Oh, no, she totally wouldn't. I'd like to call the Town Council regular meeting for Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. The order, it is 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Owens.
Here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Hossade. Mr. Beckerman.
Present.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Here. Approval of the minutes for January 10th, 2023. Any changes there, Mayor Pratam? No, all right. I'm going to stand as presented. Agenda.
No changes.
Thank you, Shannon. Agenda stands as presented. Communications council. We have public comments. Any of you lovely public like to? Oh, you're going to talk to Seth. Hey Seth, you want to talk? With that, public comment period is over. We go to the Rec Tourism Office update.
Why were you calling him Seth? It's Kelly told me to.
I did not. I'd just like to be clear.
Much better name for him.
Herb's in front of the big public audience. But anyway, good evening. I've just got four, four things for you, just quickly on lodging. We had talked about the fact that we were going to move to Key Data from DMX, you know, our, our two companies. And the BTO has effectively done that. That's with the support of our lodging partners virtually across the board. Everyone was in support of having greater frequency because Key Data, we can get the data in real time versus DMX is two to three weeks behind. And we know we're probably giving up a little bit of accuracy in that because the data scrubbed differently, maybe not as good. But everybody's okay with that. So the good news is, so we're just starting this transition. So we're putting them both side by side to see the gaps and make sure we can explain the gaps. But for the business community, because so many of our lodging properties are still in DMX, a lot of them just buy the service on their own. The business community can still get on the DMX portal, so you can still see your EKG graphs like you always have just on the portal. BTO can't get that, but you all can get it. So we have the best of both worlds for a while and then we'll really be able to test drive and see which is the better choice for us.
Sweet.
So we're really pleased with how, how supportive the lodging group was for us to take a flyer and try something that we think is going to be better. So, but we're still friends with all the DMX folks. So we, like as an example, like I asked Bill to look at for the entire winter season, what does it look like? So DMX will say that for the winter season, we're down 4%. No big deal. That's of 1231, so that's three weeks old. Key Data through last Sunday has us down at 9%. So we're looking at like, okay, did bookings fall off that much in three weeks or who's different in the mix? But we're looking at all of that. We're not concerned about it. I mean, the big, in the big scheme of things for the winter, you know, a five-point spread like that this early isn't a note of concern yet. So we're watching that and Bill and I will be diving into it really closely, you know, every week as we go forward. So this weekend, Forest Snow Sculpture, we're looking at, and this is off of DMX. We're looking at high 80s in occupancy and we expect that we'll be in the 90s for Friday and Saturday. It's about the same as it was last year. For Presidents, right now, it's looking like it's down about 10% for the three days. But we expect that to fill, just like Christmas did. You remember Bill was up here and talked about, you know, rough road ahead and stuff like that for the winter and Christmas is like filled into 3% down, which is actually good news. So, let's see, Presidents down a little bit. Looking backwards, MLK ended up being down just 5%. And the Christmas holiday, as I said, was 3%. So that's what we've been saying all along. We've been predicting this kind of correction. You know, the tidal wave that came in in 21 is moving back out to some more normal booking patterns. And I know Jake said earlier today that that's true across the western states. It is. But it's also true across the industry nationally, if not globally, and it has more to do with indoor and outdoor activities. Like if they look at visitors in New York Central Park, it spiked in 21 and all their museums and, you know, indoor attractions were down and that's flipping around this year too. So it's not just ski towns or something like that. It's bigger than that. So the travel sector, I think, is really normalizing to pre-pandemic levels. And then Jeffrey, to your question about the graphs, the easiest way to look at that, and I will tell you, I used to color them in for Roger McCarthy so he could keep it straight. But when you look at that horizontal axis and you have a bunch of short little lines, some are above, some are below. The lines above, that's ahead of last year. If it's below, it's worse than last year. So that's the simplest way to look at it.
I always hope you wouldn't say that in front of the whole team.
No, I had to because I don't have to color it in for you, but I colored it in for Roger.
Because I told him I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know you understand. Okay.
You know the truth.
So, the next thing I have, want to give you an update on is our Be Like Breckenridge partnership. So this is something we've been talking about for quite a long time. And now that the, the program has gotten the state award and it's got some real legs and getting a lot of good feedback on it. It's got the critical mass we think we need to go ahead and try to launch it a little deeper in the community. So I want it to be more than a terrific marketing campaign that we got recognized for, but I want the community to own it like in your own business, in your own home, that kind of thing. So tomorrow at 4:30 at the Welcome Center, we're going to have our launch party. And basically, the program is we're going to start slow. We're going to start small. But the program is, we're going to ask businesses that want to join. It's $150. So just something to have skin in the game. You'll sign a pledge and work with Tessa and probably some others in the BTO. And we'll figure out ways that you can really integrate Be Like Breckenridge in your business in a unique way that's meaningful for that customer base. So Tessa's already, even though the launch is tomorrow, she's already got eight partners sold and 12 in the wings. And I told her, like, we want to stop at 20 or 25, just so we have a small core group and can execute really well. So that launch is tomorrow. Tessa will be the host. Jenny Vietti, our board chair, will be there. You're all invited to go. If you'd like to go, be some nice appetizers and kind of some good mingling. We've got about 30 RSVPs for that already, which is great. I won't be able to be there. We have the TAC legislative reception tomorrow evening, so we invite all the House reps and Senate folks to come in and talk tourism for an evening. So that's tomorrow. So that's our BLB partnership. We're, we're really pleased with the initial, initial reception to it. Next thing is the English classes. I think I've talked about before, free English classes for Spanish-speaking employees. Bill has secured sponsorships and we have enough people to fill the first two classes, which we're really excited about. And the Summit Foundation is one of our sponsors, which is really key. We think, so these two classes are going to launch in February. And then we're looking at another one that will be restaurant. So this is English classes, but it's geared to our employees. So it's hospitality, industry, vocabulary, that kind of stuff. In June, we've been working, Bill's been working with Cory and the Restaurant Association to do one specific just for restaurants. So that one looks like that's, you know, it's moving along that line too. And while the BTO is not in the English class business, you know, this is our, part of our extension of, you know, what we can do for DEI and things like that. We want to provide some seed money, get it going, get it marketed, get it some legs, and then hopefully CMC will just take this over. Pretty excited about that one. And then lastly, Snow Sculpture. We have about 8,000 reservations so far for the viewing for next Saturday. The heaviest times are 12 to 2, 2 to 4, you know, a little lighter, 10 to 12. Last year, the total number of reservations we had was just over 14,000, so we're a little more than half. So it's hard for us to gauge whether we're going to have a lot more or if we're pacing comparably, comparably to last year. We have way more reservations now than we did at the same time last year. But we've also, people know about it, so they might just be getting their reservation earlier. It was never too crowded last year with 14,000 people. People come in 20 minutes and they leave. Nobody stays for two hours. So I'm not remotely concerned about being too busy on site. You know, traffic and parking is, is always our, our big concern. So great vibe last night at the welcome party. I want to thank Eric. It was awesome speech. Thank you, Carol and Shannon, for coming last night. You guys were there. You know what a good vibe it was. The big takeaway from the evening for me was the sculptors raving about the quality of the snow that was made. And the snow was made with town water this year rather than water from the river. So this is arguably the best snow these sculptors will have anywhere in the world where they carve. Now, the marketing wheels are turning. I'm like, okay, I went testimonials from these guys and girls about the great snow in Breckenridge and thinking about, you know, there's probably something there where we can spin that into the work we're going to be doing with, you know, messaging around local water and the water refill stations and some of those things. So stay tuned for that. We don't have it yet, but we'll get it. Any questions?
That was the best opening party so far. I thought the teams were fantastic and it was just, the vibe in the room was really good.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a little tight, but that was really, Team India is awesome.
Oh my God, the London can really sing.
Switzerland, they're a team of stonemasons that carve snow too. And they stopped in Memphis on the way out because the captain is a huge Elvis fan and he broke into an Elvis song. He was really good.
Thanks to Elvis. It was really cool. Yeah.
The Key Data platform that you're moving to, will that generate reports similar to what we're used to?
Yeah, they'll be comparable. They have reports that are much more detailed now and Bill's working with them so that we can get something that will look apples to apples. But again, you always have the DMX ones that you're used to looking at. You'll still have access to them. The thing with Key Data is like, if you want to say you want to see the, the data up through yesterday, we'll be able to pull that.
Very good. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right. Okay, we have a couple of proclamations. All right, the first is a proclamation for Black History Month, February 1st through the 28th of 2023. Whereas the town of Breckenridge honors Black Americans and celebrates the accomplishments and contributions of Black Americans during Black History Month. An annual celebration of Black culture and a time for recognizing the role of Black people in our history. And whereas, the month of February since 1976 has been designated as a tribute to the hundreds of years of Black innovation and struggle. And whereas, the 2023 national theme for the observance is Black Resistance, explores how Black Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms. And whereas, not to limit the celebration of Black culture, but to bring attention to important developments reckoning with centuries of injustice and movement against the injustices that still exist today. And whereas, the observances require a continued need to provide space, resources and allyship to educate our community about Black history, teach about racial progression, share collective responsibility in an effort to maintain and protect the success of Black Americans. And whereas, by the town of Breckenridge's continued recognition of Black History Month, we hope to firmly demonstrate the respect and value we have for our residents of Black heritage. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Eric Mamula, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month. Call upon all Breckenridge residents to join me in honoring the many contributions made by Black Americans to our town, state and nation and to participate in the educational and inspirational events. That's number one. The second one is a proclamation for Barney Ford Day, which is February 1st, 2023. Whereas the town of Breckenridge honors Black Americans and celebrates the accomplishments Whereas the town of Breckenridge honors black Americans and celebrates the accomplishments of Barney Ford during Black History Month and whereas Barney Ford was born enslaved over two hundred years ago in eighteen twenty-two, escaped at twenty-six and wrote to his enslaver, "If I can do better by myself than I can with you, I feel that I am at liberty to do so. This is common to all free men." And whereas Barney Ford came to Denver in eighteen sixty, was called the King of Restaurant Tours. And whereas Barney Ford suffered significant business losses due to the Great Denver Fire, bankruptcy and financial ruin, yet remained undeterred in his pursuits. And whereas Barney Ford was the first Colorado African-American to serve on a grand jury and along with other black leaders, petitioned for universal suffrage in the state constitution. Whereas in two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Jared Polis on behalf of the state of Colorado signed a proclamation celebrating Barney Ford's legacy and pioneering efforts for civil rights during his lifetime. Whereas by the town of Breckenridge's continued celebration, recognition of black leaders in our history, we hope to firmly demonstrate the respect and value we have for our residents of black heritage. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Mayor Eric Mamula, do hereby proclaim February one, two thousand and twenty-three as Barney Ford Day. Call upon, call upon all Breckenridge residents to join me in honoring the life contributions of Barney Ford to our town, state and nation as we enter Black History Month. Adopted on this twenty-fourth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Well said.
Thank you. Yeah, and when we were at the Capitol, we got to see the Barney Ford stained glass and it is pretty cool. I've never seen it before. So that was awesome. Alright, uh, we have some continued business this evening. The first is a second reading. Council Bill number one, series two thousand and twenty-three. This is a bill for an ordinance mending chapter three of Title Four pertaining to alcohol takeout and delivery permit notification.
Mayor and council, this ordinance is up for second reading and it would require any establishment that, um, obtained an alcohol takeout and delivery permit to notify the town within ten days of receiving the permit. There are no changes from first reading.
Any questions for staff? How, how do we, how are we getting this word out? Are you sending?
Yes.
Info out to everybody?
We will send communication out to all liquor licensed establishments after this is passed.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Well, just to point out, this is, this is something that we didn't pass. This is something that the state approved and we're just regulating it by giving ourselves a ten-day notice so that we know who's doing it, when and where.
Correct. It's a state-only permit and we would just like to know that our establishments have this permanent permit. So we're requiring them to give us notice.
Yeah. Excellent. She didn't, and you really cleared it up for her. Uh, any other questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? And with that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move you past Council Bill number one, series two thousand and twenty-three, the title which has been read into the record.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have first bill, first reading, Council Bill number two, series two thousand and twenty-three. This is an ordinance creating land use district forty-six and placing eight point eight acres of the Stillson property in the new land use district forty-six. Portion of TR six dash seven seven, section thirty-one, quarter four mining claims. Cunt three eight point eight six eight acres, Stillson Patch, Placer, Myrtle, Annie Load, MS number one four six six eight point eight acres, more or less. I want you to repeat that whole thing.
Evening, Mayor and council members. For the record, I'm Michelle Dollmair, Planner Three for the town. Um, this ordinance before you for first reading is to create the new land use district number forty-six for the workforce housing being planned on the Stables Village portion of the Stillson property. Based on your comments today, we will ensure that the land use map is consistent with the proposal. If you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone? Alright, anyone in the public wish to comment on the first reading of this? Bill, no resolution, uh, Council Bill number two. Nope, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I'll be brief when I make Council Bill number two, first reading, uh, series two thousand and twenty-three, the title which has been read into the record.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call, please, Helen.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Beckerman. Mayor Mamula.
Yes, uh, we have a resolution number two, series two thousand and twenty-three. This is a resolution providing town attorney assistant for municipal prosecution and establishing rates.
Mayor, council, um, this is a renewal of the retainer agreement with Bob Gregory to serve as our municipal prosecutor. The provisions have not changed other than there's a proposal for a nominal four percent increase in the hourly rate and um, clarifying that he is, um, entitled to have a recreation pass and a town hall pass, parking pass, sorry.
Oh, I like a town hall pass. So he could leave. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
I move we pass resolution number two, series two thousand and twenty-three, resolution providing town attorney assistance for municipal prosecution and establishing rates.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Alright, we have, uh, liquor marijuana and tobacco licensing authority appointments. What do we, uh?
Mayor Mamula. Kristen Town Manager, Haynes Hat.
You gonna talk about this at all or is everybody just ready to vote? Okay, ready to vote? There, okay, then.
I, yeah, I will say, I think both of the candidates are great. Um, I'm, I'm pretty, uh, but they're both great and I really appreciate them, uh, keeping their, uh, putting in hat and a ring.
Then I'd ask that you pass them back to Shannon.
I think it's supposed to go this way. Oh, Shannon, oh. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I need, I'm losing my hearing. Man, it's way more than hearing, just so you know.
Scott, Seth.
I'm calling you Seth from now on. On the silver sneakers coming hot looking. I'm gonna say, go talk to Seth. Uh, go see Seth. He's the guy that knows.
Alright, you have, uh, six votes for Haley Littleton and one vote for Sean Simons. Off at Simmons.
Alright. Do you want to make a motion to, uh, yeah, put Haley on the board?
Yes, I move we put Haley Littleton on the Liquor Marijuana Advisory Board.
Do you want me to make the motion that's in the packet?
Yeah, maybe we should.
It would be great. Thank you.
I move that we appoint Mrs., uh, Ms. Littleton to fulfill the remainder of the four-year term vacated by Ms. Taren Power on the Breckenridge Liquor and Marijuana Licensing Authority.
I guess I'll second that.
Yours was better, Jeff.
Yeah, I thought it was, you know, more brief.
In a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Alright, uh, with that, um, planning commission decisions. What would you like to call up? Please, sorry. With that planning commission decision stand as presented, uh, other matters. Oh. Oops, are. Go ahead. Um, what, um, where are we at, uh, trying to regulate, um, plastic water bottles? Uh, do we have a kind of a committee working or just working on it? I know we're gonna give a lot of lead time to, to give them time, but, uh, where, where's this stand?
Kirsten, I'll give you an update.
Um, it's a good question. We have a draft coming to February fourteenth for first reading that will, um, lay out, uh, the things that we can do right now under state law and then also have, um, covered the plastic bottles issue that will become effective twenty twenty-four. So it's coming back to you soon.
Okay, good.
I probably have to ask you a couple times before then.
Jeffrey, the only other thing I'll add is, um, if you recall the last meeting, I think Kirsten said because that, it'll be in the ordinance that will adopt it as of July, I think, well, June first, I think, twenty twenty-four. But we have time in between to figure out exactly how that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, we give the, the purveyors time to deal with it.
James, I have heard a bunch of times over the last few weeks, what a great job your team is doing clearing the snow. And I agree completely. I think it's been a great year for having the streets look.
I have another, another matter. Yeah, um, James, uh, people ask, have asked me about water pressures. Is that, is the water pressure been, uh, lower because there's a lot of people in town? Or is it like the Highlands like sucking off all the, um, the pressure? So the, yeah. Yeah, this is, a couple people said they just, they thought it was lower. You know, there again, it could be just kind of.
Have you been paying your bill?
I go to the town well and bring buckets home. But yes, it, it could be just kind of a placebo that there's a bunch of people in town and people assume their water pressure is lower. I don't, mine's fine. Uh, let me, yeah, it's some, some guy.
You might not care that much about it.
It's just some guy in the produce section of the city market. I told him to call Seth and, uh, so, uh, he'll, he'll deal with it.
Seth's got it.
Yeah.
Any other matters?
No, that was, I shot my wad.
That was good.
Yeah.
Anybody? Alright, thank you everyone. We are adjourned.